All right, I am going to call to order the Monday, January 9th Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting at seven o'clock. On January 9th, and we're going to start the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to public speak. Mike and Kathy Blazi, or Kathy Blazi and-
I am here.
I'm here too.
So are you, are you going to speak individually as a, as a group?
Um, I'm speaking. Let me ask the boss, are you speaking?
No.
Just I'm speaking.
All right, let's, let's go then. You're up Ken.
Well, Happy New Year to you, all the Board of Selectmen, and of course, our Town Administrator Eric. I would like to invite the Board of Selectmen to have a table at our annual senior fundraiser on Sunday, February 5th. It's held from 10 to 2 at the AES Gym. And this would opportu- offer an opportunity for residents to meet you if they haven't, and to ask questions they may have, and for all the Board of Selectmen members to share any information to the public that they have. So thank you for considering.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, February 5th. Paul, can you remind me February 5th that I have to go to that? Is that a Saturday Kathy?
That's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday, okay.
I will remind you.
I was going to sneak over there after basketball and get there, but it's, all right. We will sit over and go to Elaine.
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. Um, I'm definitely going to be here to support Jed and his request for some employee support for, for part-time employee who can go ahead and do planning and economic development for the town. Um, we'd like to see someone that we can work with so that we have someone to talk to and, and work on all the wonderful plans that the UConn students sent to us, which hopefully people have had a chance to look at. Um, it's up on YouTube, um, under CDC, under UConn Presentations, uh, so anybody can look at it. It's about, about two and a half hours worth of presentations. I think there were 14, uh, planning things that the kids did. Um, and a lot of, uh, good ideas were in there that involved, um, the, uh, affordable housing, um, conservation, good use of, it was all town-owned land that they looked at, that they worked with. Um, so hopefully we can get something going from those ideas that they presented to us. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is that up on our website by the way?
I'm not sure. Uh, we could see if we could go ahead and get the link to it on the website so people can go ahead and take a look at it.
Eric, maybe we can try to get that linked up. Uh, Anne from May.
I, I'm here to, uh, support Jed with a, uh, idea of getting, hiring a town planner and, uh, just also just listening to everything else. Thanks.
Uh, we have a phone number. That's Dennis. Sorry Dennis, don't, you don't have to tell me. I, I got it this time. Uh, Valerie Bruno, would you like to participate in public speak?
Uh, no, I'm all set Jeff, thank you.
All right, you got it. Okay, so we're going to move on to, uh, item three, additions and deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have any items that they'd like to remove or add to our agenda?
Uh, Dennis is going to have a longer list, but I would like to add one thing, which is under item 5A. I would like to add item I, Select Review Panel for Planet Conservation and Development, RFP.
So, Plan, Conservation, Development, P-O-C-D, RFP. Okay? Uh, I am going to, I sent you guys all a proposed, the proposed, change to nine, to item nine. But before I do this, well, I'll sit there and I will make a motion and I would like to discuss this, so, um, the issue that is out there is the proposed amendments that I forwarded over to you, uh, early this afternoon, uh, relating to, so move to amend item nine by deleting entirely and replacing with this follows with the following item nine subsections. A Freightliner Hartford, B New Community Senior Center Resolution, C Resolution to Confirm Prior Vote on the ARPA Spending Resolution to Accept a Steep Grant for the, uh, vehicle, uh, building on Center Street, the resolution to authorize Town Administrator to submit the Deep Recreation Trails Grant, F Resolution to Authorize the Town Administrator to Submit a Trip Grant, G Finance Department Employment, H Stats Enforcement Official, I Upper Homes Update, J Recognizing Andover Students, K Cool Program Contract Update, L Zoning Change to Town Property on School Road Update, and M The 824 Referral to P&amp;Z for Proposed New Community Center Building.
Okay, recognizing Andover residents, not students. Just wanted to correct that.
Ooh, thank you Paul. My bad, I can't read.
It's okay.
I must be tired.
And Jeff, can we get a clarification on, uh, item D because it really doesn't say garage. I was, I was trying to wonder what that was for.
No, that's what I added into, so I added in the garage Jeff because it was unclear to me as well.
Okay.
I'm with you on that one. So, that is what that steep grant is for, right Eric? I wasn't incorrect? Yes, okay. So, does somebody want to sit there and second that just for discussion purposes? So we can sit there and look at the individual items because I know there's a little bit of issue related to some of them?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, I know there's, uh, the new community center, a resolution and, um, the ARPA funds that, that we as a board definitely have sat there and moved to, uh, utilize for the community center. I totally am in agreement with that and there's been some discussions today between Town Administrator, Town Attorney, and members of the Board of Selectmen as to what is the appropriate path forward as far as, do we need to go to a town meeting for this or don't we? And so, uh, I'd like to have this conversation now to sit there and before we put this on the agenda, just get an understanding of, of necessity to do it or not. So, um, Eric or Dennis, and Dennis, I am going to sit there and say briefly, but without going crazy, is it necessary for us to have town meeting related to this item?
Well, yeah, I think it's necessary for you all to, uh, amend the agenda to add some of these items. I was, uh, as you mentioned that the last, I saw the, uh, the video of the last meeting you had, which only lasted an hour or so, but you did mention that I was in Hawaii. It's true, I was. I was Shanghai'd there by my wife. But I'm back now and when I got back, uh, one of the things I was asked to do by, uh, Town Administrator Eric was to look at the, a couple of issues. One was the, uh, issue regarding the, uh, uh, purchase and, uh, uh, over time, the purchase, uh, through financing for five years or so, four or five years of a, a, a plow truck. The other item was the, um, community center, um, the community center issue, the community center, um, uh, you know, that's being going to be constructed, uh, near, or near the town hall and whether or not, uh, anything needed to be done on that pursuant to the charter. I was asked to review the charter sections on, um, uh, financing and, um, offer some sort of an opinion. And I did, in fact, I spent an awful lot of time on it because frankly, uh, the charter sections, um, pertaining to, uh, that kind of thing are, uh, uh, like a Rubik's Cube. They're very complicated. And, um, they're, they really need to be revised. We've done some charter revisions since I've been town attorney and, uh, I think it's turned out really well in the sense that we ended up with a town administrator and a Board of Selectmen that, uh, was doing a great job here for the town. I know you don't want me to go on too long, but I really had to say that. But, but the sections pertaining to, uh, town finances are written as if they were written by somebody who didn't want the town to spend any money. And that, that, that precedes me as town attorney. I've been there for 20 years. And I, I, I don't even understand, I, I don't have a working knowledge of them without looking at them carefully. And so I did, I spent a good part of the weekend looking at them. And, um, uh, I, 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 I talked to Eric at, at some great, uh, great extent and Eric noticed, uh, something that I didn't notice. But, but for one thing, I did put some items on here that I thought should be considered by the Board of Selectmen tonight uh, because there, it's, it's timely for them to be considered regarding the, uh, purchase of the, um, proposed purchase of the plow truck and also the, uh, community center issue. Because senior community center, community senior center, uh, matter-
And Dennis, before you, before you continue to go on, I would think the one that we're most concerned about is the community center. I think the one related to the plow truck, uh, makes sense and, uh, not that I want to go to a town meeting related to the purchase of, of a plow truck that is necessary for, for the community, but, um, we have to bring it in front of everyone, that's fine. But the community center, we have discussed the community center before. We have put this in front of the Board of Finance before. The Board of Finance has put it into one of their, their minutes or, you know, the information related to one of their meetings. So everybody was aware of this.
It was in the budget summary actually Jeff.
Yeah, okay. So, so my question is, the, this, this entire discussion about the community center has been in front of our board for, you know, two years almost. And it, I would believe that it has overwhelming support within the community, even the Blazys would know better than I would. But do we have to absolutely go in front of a town meeting to do this? Yes, yes, no?
That, that's a, that's a gray area. That's a tough issue given your, your charter and especially certain, uh, items in the charter. I had, I've had some discussions this afternoon, some very, uh, good discussions with, uh, Selectman Adrian Mandeville. And, um, I, I am, I am, uh, and I, and he also, uh, mentioned to me, uh, just recently, maybe 20 minutes ago, what Jeff Murray just said about the, um, about the, uh, that topic of, of applying the ARPA money to this project, which, you know, believe me, I think it's a great idea, you know, outside of the fact that I'm town attorney. But that's not my role here. I'm, I'm an attorney. I'm not, I'm not a member of the community or a, uh, certainly not a selectman. And, um, Adrian, uh, basically, uh, made it clear to me that the, uh, town bu- during the town budget process, that this was revealed at the town meeting. Uh, Eric and I couldn't find anything over the weekend that indicated that, that it had been. But apparently there is evidence that Jeff Murray has, Selectman Murray, and also Adrian. And, um, I would have to say that, um, based on that, um, it seems that this would not be a supplementary, um, appropriation and probably not have to go to, uh, town meeting or referendum as it states in this, uh, item I prepared. Um, but on the other hand, it is a gray area for sure. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not here to tell you what you want to hear. I'm here to tell you what I think. I now think that, uh, given the fact that there is evidence, uh, in the record, uh, on record, that there was a consideration at the town budget meeting, um, back, way back when, that, uh, the ARPA money would be used for, uh, this project, which I think is a wonderful idea, uh, outside of my role as town attorney, uh, and, and I think that makes a difference. So that's my answer at, at this point. But I can tell you that, uh, I studied this very carefully.
I, I-
And this is not something that-
Go ahead. All right, I'm done. I was just going to say thank you for all your work. Uh, I'm going to amend my, uh, motion to strip, uh, item C from the proposed changes to the agenda.
I'll second that Jeff.
Okay, so we're going to go with, A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M under, uh, Old Business. And, uh, we have Eric's item, which is 5A, I, which is, uh, P-O-C-D-P. And Eric, do I need to add any additional information related to that?
Uh, it's, it's to select the review panel for the P-O-C-D-R-F-P.
Okay. Okay, I, I will also make a motion to add item, uh, 5A, I, P-O-C-D-R-F-P Review Panel Selection. Actually, do we have any candidates before I put selection?
So Jed will discuss that as part of his, uh,
I know for sure, we'll put it, we'll put it in there. All right, does somebody want to second that one too?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of adding those items to the agenda? Aye. Okay.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so that was for, oh, because, uh, Mr. Mandeville is not here. I know he, he's, he's not feeling well, but it's fine, right? We're all good? Okay. Um, we're going to move on now to, uh, item four, the Treasurer's Report, Finance, uh, Department Report of Revenue, Town Budget Summary, Town Aid Road, Town Cash Report, Appropriations Transfer and Overexpenditure Report. Eric, are you going to provide this?
Uh, I am. Um, I just got notified a few minutes ago that Cheryl was not going to be able to attend. So I put in the packet, the, uh, hopefully the last expenditure report from, uh, from Edmunds. And I also put in the check register, um, for the month of November and December. So those are both in the packet. Uh, if you have questions about either of the two of those, I'd be happy to answer that. And then after that, I put a list of all the things. So now we're getting to the point of the budget where we're actually seeing overages in the count. So on page 30 of the packet is the first six months of overages in the budget. And you'll see that everything there, uh, other than diesel, um, is under the threshold at which I, as Town Administrator, per the Board of Finance Policy, uh, approved. So those have been approved by both the department heads in question and myself as the Town Administrator. So this is for your information. Now, the one for, uh, Public Works Diesel, um, is not actually over. It is just, the way we do it is that when we fill up the diesel tank, it gets, it gets taken against the Public Works Diesel line item. And then when we build the school, we build RAM, we build senior transportation, we build the fire department. And when they pay us, we refund it back into the diesel line for Public Works. So at the moment, it looks like they're overspent, uh, but they're actually not. We just haven't gotten refunded. We may be overexpent by the end of the year though, um, because we started the year off with essentially completely dry, uh, completely dry tank, um, because we used a fair amount of diesel last year. Uh, if it stays warm and we don't do a lot of snow plowing this winter, we might be okay. Still too early to know. Um, the only other thing that's not listed on this form is that we have to internally move some money around, uh, and that's going to be a discussion with Board of Finance. When we did roadwork this year, we did roadwork knowing that we were going to get $128,000 back from the steep grant to account for part of that. Um, and that we were going to spend out of the Road Improvement Fund and the Town Aid Road. So what had happened initially is all the money came out of the Road Improvement Fund, which over expended that considerably, but the money is actually there. It just has to be credited back from the steep grant. It has to be credited back from the, uh, Road Improvement Fund. So we're not actually over there, um, although if you looked at the individual special funds, you would see that that one is overexpent. So that's my initial report on this unless you all have specific questions for me.
Uh, I do. One of the, one of the issues you, uh, you addressed, this will be our last report from this, from the software.
I hope so.
All right, and how is the transition going?
So we were originally going to try to do the transition at QuickBooks tonight because Marina is here. Um, that got pushed off because Farrell has another conflict. The goal is to do that, the, them to do that transition tomorrow evening, hopefully.
All right, and, um, thank you. And then, uh, I thank you for the, the check register. That really is, uh, helpful to understand things. Uh, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. CN Wood of Connecticut?
Sure, that's, those are repair items. Uh, I think CN Wood is mostly where we get parts for the sweeper.
$6,600 parts for the sweeper?
Yeah, we spent a lot of money on the sweeper this year. Um, we actually had budgeted, uh, if you remember back to the last year's budget, we had, so we had the Public Works Equipment Fund, but then we also budgeted an extra $30,000 to accomplish two things. One were major repairs on the sweeper, um, which we knew about when we bought the sweeper, but we were hoping to put it off for a couple of years, which we did. Um, and so that was total, I guess 15 or 16,000 dollars. Jay could probably, Jay's on, he could probably get a better depth description from him from that.
Okay. Hey Jay.
How you doing? Good evening. Yeah, Eric's correct on that. So we spent, uh, it was close to, right around $15,000 on that.
Okay, and how much time did you put on the sweeper this year?
How much time did we put on it?
How many hours?
Uh, well, we did, uh, some early sweeping up, early on, and then we, uh, uh, did all the chip seal and that's when the thing broke down. So we didn't get to finish sweeping, um, until we made repairs to finalize the chip seal.
Okay. So, use of it is usually in spring, but you used it a lot during your chip sealing time to suck up the dust?
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's something that honestly Jay should be watched and it probably should, we should probably utilize some kind of account for it to sit there and track the extra costs on the sweeper because it would be good for, uh, the board to understand the total cost and maybe determine whether a new unit is better than a used unit. Eventually, and I understand what Eric is saying. I do remember that there was going to be repairs to the unit when we bought it used. But, uh, it's something that we should look into as to how we track those expenses so we can make a better determination in the future of new versus used or, you know, how much is really going into the, the piece of equipment specifically.
Yeah, so that machine new is about $260,000, give or take. And we currently have about 85 into it.
Okay. Um, that, and then Eric, just as a general, I, I looked in the month of November, it looks like we spent about $20,000 with Will Manic Waste Paper for tipping fees and various services. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think we were just behind on our billing was part of it. That's why that month was so, normally it's around eight to 9,000. So that, that represents us being, you know, it's just where we fit in the billing cycle.
Okay, so, uh, and then maybe it's not 30 days, but it all captured in one month, so. All right, uh, the question there is, so you're saying it should be eight, let's say it's $10,000 a month for Will Manic Waste. That's $120,000 annually on tipping fees and various costs related to the transfer station.
Uh, I don't think it's that much, but it's not far off of that between tipping fees, bulky waste and garbage. Because I believe our total expenditure for that, uh, not including recycling, tend to run about 160,000. And the only other major expense we have really is salary, you know, the personnel salary. So yeah, I would guess off the top of my head, 120,000 total for refuse, probably about right.
All right, and then the offset from related sticker sales is?
Uh, I would have to look up that. I mean-
Around 40, isn't it?
Yeah, it was going to be around, with, with what we increased the fee to, it was going to be over 40. Um, something like that.
Okay, just good information to have and to have out there so people understand. Anybody else have any other questions related to Finance Department? Information provided. Okay, all right, let's move on to, uh, item five, Board and Commission Presentations. Uh, here we have, uh, the P&amp;Z Chairman Jed Larson. As we discussed the last time when Jed was on our program, he, uh, he was a Navy vet, retired military, greatly appreciated, uh, dog lover and walks the lake. So Jed, all yours for planting and zoning.
Thank you Eric. If I can share my screen?
You may.
Okay, well, thanks for listening once again. And it was a year ago that, uh, Elaine and I came before the Board of Selectmen to, uh, make a pitch for a part-time town planner and economic development coordinator. And at that point, I pretty much stuck with what was written in the Planet Conservation and Development in the town's Long Range Plan. And I thought we made a pretty compelling case to, uh, go put this individual on the staff. In the following week, in the, uh, River East was the headline, "No Town Planner for Andover." And so, uh, I said, "Well, I guess that didn't go as well as I thought it did." So, uh, this year, we get to, uh, we get to, uh, talk about some of the same information, but, uh, uh, I'll try to add my own personal take on some of those things. So the plan talked about it, uh, you know, being very difficult for volunteer commission like planning and zoning to implement. And, uh, I certainly, you know, don't like coming to the Board of Selectmen and, and, uh, you know, talking about what a poor job I've been able to do in trying to do all the things that, that need to be done here. But the list that we looked at from the P-O-C-D talked about repair, prepare, recommended zoning text amendments. And in 2021, you know, the Public Act 21-29 where, where we talked to you about opting out of the, uh, the accessory dwelling unit regulations was, was part of that. But there's, uh, you know, as many text changes that came out of that Public Act that, that we'd seen for, for many years. In, uh, in addition to that, uh, our land use attorney Mark Branch has had the opportunity to go through our regulations, uh, to do a review of them on, uh, those things that we hadn't recently updated. And, uh, and so I've got a list of literally hundreds of, uh, comments and required changes as a result of his review there as well. And so, uh, and I know I haven't been able to push through very many- and I know I haven't been able to push through very many changes to the regulations because they do take a lot of time to figure out what they, they ought to be saying. And hard work there. So that's something that we have not done as well as we should have. Working with developers proposing projects in town in compliance with the plan, Elaine talked about all the great ideas we got from, you know, the Yukon students. And, and we do have a couple of pieces of property, you know, right now that will be going on the market. Up for development very soon, you know, the one is Lindholm's Corner over there, Route eighty-seven and Route six. That property was subdivided, the property owner requested and in planning and zoning agreed that we would put it back in the one big parcel because it wasn't very well subdivided to make it useful for much. The other, the other piece of property that's going to be on the market soon is, you know, the gravel pit restoration is, is wrapping up and, and the owner of that property wants to develop that soon too. So you know, we were kind of fortunate that, you know, Dollar General came to town to give us a little bit of economic development. Yeah, that was not what, you know, a lot of the, the people in town would have preferred to come here. It would be nice to have somebody, you know, working to get what it is the town does want there. Third item, so apply for the many grants currently available, you know, and that will tie into a little bit further down, but you know, the, it seems like the, the way of the future for, you know, the federal government, state government to give money to towns is through the grant program. And, and so that's how they're, they're helping the towns comply with their desires is, is by giving grants to do those things. Same thing with the request for proposals, RFPs, I'm not going to talk about that. But the last one, you know, perhaps most importantly, to promote the goals and policies of planning, zoning, to elected officials, town staff, other boards and commissions. And here, you know, I thought we put out a pretty decent affordable housing plan last June. It was required by the Connecticut law. And, and I've not done a very good job of bringing that to the attention of the different people in the town. So that, you know, there's an understanding of the importance of that, especially with regards to, you know, affordable senior housing for both the new, new workers starting out and, and seniors who are living on a fixed income. So that's, that's where I stand with, you know, not doing as well as I should have on the plan of Conservation and Development Goals. You know, we also talked about the recommendations from long-term plan and, and that got into the economic development. And, and that, you know, talked about hiring a part-time individual for sixteen hours a month as a town planner with potential jobs sharing as an economic development coordinator. I don't know if it was sixteen hours per month as a town planner or in another sixteen for economic development. But I can tell you that sixteen hours a month isn't very much to get much done. And I do spend a considerable, you know, greater number of hours per month than that in, in not getting where we need to go. And so, you know, I think sixteen hours a month probably wouldn't fit the bill there. I, I'm looking, my recommendation would be for sharing those two functions, maybe ten hours per week. What would it cost us? The, you know, Capital Region Council of Government recently completed a salary survey at town planners. I was thinking that we might get a a mid-grade planner who is a supervisor at full-time that ranged anywhere from seventy-five thousand to about a hundred and fourteen thousand a year based on experience. So if we were looking at ten hours a week, that would be in a range of twenty to thirty thousand dollars per year. So anyhow, town planning is a marathon, not a, not a sprint. I know, you know, over in Middletown, they had a town planner that was working on, you know, improving things over there in the year twenty, twenty-five years later, it's actually starting to pay off. I know Eric, you know, working on the complete streets plan, he's had, you know, getting the, the crosswalk in it by the library there and, and those improvements made since I first came to the commission, you know, a couple of years ago. In Andover, while we're a very small town, you know, we have the same regulatory overhead as any other town. You know, when the state says change your regulations to do this, it doesn't matter whether we're a small town or not, it's still a significant overhead burden to to update the regulations to comply with the new laws. So, you know, my conclusion is a town planner, economic development coordinator should be hired on a part-time basis to prepare the numerous regulatory changes required. Execute the Affordable Housing Plan. I think there's some good things in there. There's some good properties that the town has that we could put affordable senior housing in. We can attract the commercial businesses to Andover that are most desired by the residents. And realize Andover's tremendous potential to define itself is a unique place in the region. So that's, that's my pitch and I don't know if Elaine, you had anything that, that you wanted to add on that? But I do think it, it could, you know, significantly benefit the town.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree with you Jed on that. I am on the board of the Talon County Chamber of Commerce, of which the town of Andover is a member of, which allows me to be part of it. I'm also on their Economic Development Commission committee where I sit down, get to sit down once a month with other town planners and Economic Development Commission people in the area. Coventry, Mansfield, Tallinn. It's, it's great to be able to sit there and just have a conversation of what's going on in the towns and what they're doing and, and like the Sustainable Connecticut came out of being able to listen to them and what they're doing. Because those people come and Advanced Connecticut comes and talks to us over there at the Talon County Chamber. And, and it's just frustrating that there's no one to turn to. You know, it's like there, we get all these ideas. We've got Yukon students now working with us and giving us plans and we can't go anywhere with it without an employee who's got some time and a listening ear to go ahead and try to do anything. But yeah, it's, it's, it's eye-opening to see what they're all able to accomplish and, but unfortunately realize what we cannot.
I read a lot of stories in the newspaper about the surrounding towns building, you know, senior housing, affordable housing, that kind of thing. And there's a ton of grant money going out to support those developments. And I just hate to see Andover not being able to take advantage of more of that money that's out there that I think we could put to good use.
Jed, thank you very much. One thing Jed, I think we all feel your pain. And Jed, I would, I would never sit there and say you don't get much accomplished. I mean, I know you have large shoes to fill in planning and zoning, but I think you've done an exceptional job, honestly. So thank you very much for everything that you do. Any of the other members have any questions for Jed or Elaine? Okay, it's definitely something that we'll take under consideration and, and we need to sit there and do something, Jed. Because one of the things that in my mind is that we need to provide resources for people that are willing to volunteer and willing to put in the time to sit there and do things within the community. So it is something that we should consider. You know, to try to sit there and move forward.
Yeah, and certainly I am not unique in the, the number of hours that I volunteer, you know, through the commission. I know that everybody that's sitting on the Board of Selectmen, you know, they've got their fingers in other pies and, and putting in the same kind of hours. So I don't, I like working, like doing what I'm doing. I just would like it to like us be able to take advantage of some of those other things.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, Elaine. Thank you very much as well for everything that you do.
The other thing that Eric added to the agenda here is, you know, I'm requesting the Board of Selectmen make and approve the following motion. And it's that the Planning and Zoning Commission is designated as group to select the company to assist Andover in development of the next plan of Conservation and Development from the proposals received on eighteen January. So the new purchasing agreement that recently went into effect requires the Board of Selectmen to designate who it is that's going to, you know, select the, the candidate from the applicants. And so I'm requesting the Board of Selectmen allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to do that as we did with the Affordable Housing Plan.
Does anyone on the Board of Selectmen have a problem with allowing P and Z to be the reviewer of the the R F P and the panel to review the P O C D RFPs?
So I would echo Jed's comments that I do believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission is probably the best entity to review the proposals and select the proposed contractor. Obviously, it would be, it would fall on me and the town's attorney when it comes to drafting the actual agreement and that would come back to the Board of Selectmen for approval. But I would note also that this does put one Board of Selectmen member, Scott Person, who's also on the Planning and Zoning Commission on that. So that review panel.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we make the Planning and Zoning Committee the review panel for the P O C, P O C D R F P.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That was also four nothing. So Jed, can I ask you that, or Eric, remove Jed from the control of the screen? Thank you. All right, back to seeing everybody's lovely face. Mike Plossy, you're right there. I like it. So. All right, so we're going to move on to not a five B. It's a Hop River Park signage and away finding from Eric Anderson.
Okay, so I'm going to back up and just talk about one of the thing really briefly. So a, an organization has been formed called the Hop River Trail Alliance. So the way this organization is structured is that the directors of the organization are of individuals within the town governments of the seven towns that are on the Hop River Trail. There are two town managers slash town administrators. There's a Public Works Director, a Director of Planning and Development. Actually, two directors of planning and development, the Parks and Recs Director and one town engineer that sit on the panel. And then there's a series of officers that do the actual work. So the Board of Directors is, has the authority in the power to authorize things. They essentially have another group of people that do the actual labor. So it's a structure that's modeled after a bunch of the other trail associations because it keeps the deciding power within the towns themselves to design, to look at what direction the trail association is going to do. Kind of the first thing the Trail Association has, has looked at doing, which is in your packet, is to apply for grant funding to do a universal signage update on the rail trail and work directly with D E P to make that happen. It looks like the town of Manchester has agreed to be the grant administrator for that. So I guess what I'm looking at and saying, this is something that will benefit the town of Andover and it's had the input of our fire chief in terms of location of signage and how the signage is developed. So the fire department can more easily respond to emergencies on the trail and it'll be good for trail users. The bottom line is it doesn't cost the town anything. And it will benefit the town. So I signed off on that. That's all I wanted to say about that unless you have other questions. I did ask a week or two ago whether you had any problems with me appointing myself to be Andover's representative for that. I'm looking at it as something that's a relatively minor time commitment on my part, the people doing the actual work. You know, so for me, it's every couple of months going to one meeting and voicing my opinion. So that's, that's where I'm at of that unless you all have any questions or concerns for me on that.
Eric, I just had one question. It seemed like, so is this going to start mile zero down at the Manchester trailhead, the start of the trail?
No, it's actually going to start it at the opposite. It's going to start it at intersection of the airline trail. Will be mile zero.
Okay, and then it's going to go backwards towards Manchester?
Correct.
That would probably make sense because of the trail expansion that's probably anticipated on the Manchester side.
That, that's why that was done with the, with the concurrence of D E P.
Okay, and thank you for doing that because, you know, the, the mileage is pretty spotty at best and I know it would benefit a lot of users to know where they are exactly on the trail and how far they traveled.
Yeah, I, I think, I think all in all, this is a good program that's won't cost us anything. The only even potential downside I could see to the town is the more markers you put on the side of the trail, you know, the more things you have to mow around. But worst case scenario, we're going to be looking at a marker every quarter mile. So it's not going to be a huge burden on the mower.
Yep, and Vernon's done that and it's, it's, it's very well marked. So I, you know, I'd be in support of this hundred percent.
Okay. Eric, are you going to move on to five B or that was it?
Uh, that was it for me.
Okay. All right. Item six, appointments. Do we have any appointments to make?
None?
Bill, well, we have, Jeff, we do though. We, Bill DeRosa, right?
Is that, I mean, he was, he was appointed by the Board of Finance, correct?
Right. Yeah. It's, it's not something that requires action on the Board of Selectmen, but you're right, the Board of Finance did appoint a replacement for Diane Choquette. And there were two nominees. They were both really good candidates and the Board of Finance chose Bill DeRosa as the new Board of Finance member.
He will be a great member of the Board of Finance. Okay. Item seven, resignations. Anything, anybody resigning us this month?
Not that I know of.
All right. Item eight, the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, the, for the my report is in the packet, so I'm just going to go over, I'm not going to go over everything. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. I have been working with the new town engineer, Joe Dillon from Nathan L. Jacobson. He and myself and Jay Puddles spent quite a bit of time looking at the the town roads. So we've done a couple of things. One, we have started preparation for the state local bridge program applications for, and we, we're planning on submitting for the culverts on both Hudsonson Road and Lake Road as soon as that becomes available. So the second thing is that I've talked before about the trip grant application, which is the Transportation Rural Improvement Program Grant Application. That is due to Crog in mid-February. And what Crog has said is they want to use roughly the same procedure for the lotsip grant program, which means we need to justify that the methodology we plan on using the roads, which is basically grinding them up and reclaiming them, will net a road that's going to last a minimum of twenty years. So to do that, we're, we're talking about So, to do that, we're, we're talking about potentially hiring V H B, which is among many things. They've got a pavement management division to come in and do selective coring of the roads in question, which would be Hendy Road, a little bit of Long Hill, and Skinner Road to just make sure that all of those sections can be done with reclamation alone, or whether there are areas that we may actually have to add additional material to because of the soils. So, I still don't have a number back from them. If it's reasonable, my intention is to, and they are the approved, they have a contract through CROG to do that, to assist the towns, so that should satisfy our purchasing policy. So, we may end up having to hire them to do some local digging and patching of the roads to give us kind of a road soil profile. You know, so we're, we're hard at work trying to get that application in and out the door. So, those are the major things right now we're discussing with the Town Engineer. As far as Public Works goes, I notified you that Rich was out for surgery. You know, I don't wanna go into details on that. He is had the surgery and recovering. I also understand that another Town Public Works employee injured his shoulder today. If you wanna talk about that more, we should probably do that at an executive session since we're talking about a public employee. And I'd be happy to do that. Then Jay is there. As far as the Bunker Hill Bridge, we've received the forms from the State for the Right-Away Acquisition Negotiation. The way it works is that the State does the, any negotiation and pays for any right-of-way if they need more area to work or to extend the bridge at Bunker Hill. So, that doesn't cost the town anything, and we don't have to do, do the negotiation. We will apparently have to sign off on whatever agreement is reached with whatever the landowners are. As far as Long Hill Bridge Design, as far as I know, the, the engineer, Chris Savideo, is trying to get the survey scheduled over the winter while the water levels are relatively low. But I don't know how backed up DOT is. On the Times Farm Bridge, I finally got the new engineer assigned to the final closeout from DOT. I have had a bunch of conversations with him, and his first comment to me was you gotta redo all these forms because they're out of date more than a year has gone by since you originally filed. And I said, a year has gone by because DOT has sat on their tuckus and not done anything about it. And he said, yeah, well, you still have to fill out the forms. So, I filled out several forms and resubmitted them to the DOT this week. The good news is they are actually working on it, and they do actually have somebody assigned for final closeout. So, that's the first good news I've heard about that in quite a while. I talked about the small bridges and culverts. So, the Review Committee, and we're gonna deal with this again a little later, selected the combination of Leading Edge and Peg Arch as the lowest-cost bidder with a proposal that the committee preferred. So, the committee has recommended that we sign an interim contract for the design and also to flesh out the full project specification with alternates to make sure, you know, we're agreed on exactly what we're getting. And frankly, the, the companies are not gonna put, you know, there's a limit to how much they're gonna put into it before they have a contract with the town with some skin game. So, our recommendation is to sign an initial design contract that will be credited to the final cost of the program and hold them to their original program cost, which they've agreed to do. So, that's a little bit later in the packet. As far as the twenty twenty-two grant, the only thing that's really new is they, we do know that it got assigned to the Economic and Community Development Branch. So, that will be who's the Grant Administrator. You know, I, I frankly have not done anything to further that project since the last meeting. Writing new grants and budgets are kind of taking precedent right now. As far as the TRIP grant, I already talked about that, but basically that the goal of that grant is to reclaim and repave Hendy from roughly Pine Ridge up to Long Hill Road, and then Long Hill Road into Skinner to Wheeling Road. We get that long stretch all taken care of prior to when we tear out the Long Hill Bridge. So, we kind of get that done ahead, so when it gets the excess traffic, it's in better condition to do that. Rec Trails Grant, so that's another one that's in the packet that you'll see later. But it's my intention to submit another Recreation Trails Grant, very similar to what we submitted last year, and that will be for the, a multi-use pathway that connects the Town Hall, School, Community Center down to the rail trail, ideally running along Route three sixteen. But what this is, is a Planning Grant whose goal is to examine that old route and figure out what the, uh, the best way to do that is. That will require a twenty percent match on the town, but the town can credit a lot of the, the Planning and Development work that goes into it, like developing an RFP meeting ahead of time. So, it's not gonna be all out of pocket, but the town is probably gonna end up spending some, somewhere around eight thousand out of pocket on that grant to get that done. So, that's another one of those ones that will have to go to town meeting. And so legislative updates, I provided written testimony to both Cost and Capital Regional Council Governments on a number of issues that I think are worthy of them considering. At least on cost, is Council of Small Towns, so they are kind of the lobbying arm for small towns in Connecticut. This woman, Betsy Gera, runs that and is very effective. So, at the same time, I also met with our new Legislative Representatives. I met with Stephen Weir, who's replacing Robin Green in the fifty-fifth district. We had a great talk. And then I met separately with M D Rahman and his Legislative aide, actually both Val Bruno and I met with, so we both got to give our input and have a good discussion about like what kind of legislative priorities and things would be beneficial to small towns. And the last thing on my list is, I, I thought it was important, this was a, this was something that I developed for, through a conversation with Matt Hart, because we had talked about what are the kind of shared services that smaller towns use? And as the smallest town in the Capital Regional Council Governments, I said I would put together a list of all the things that we as a town kind of share with other towns, just so you, he could get a feel for, you know, how much stuff is really out there. That's really one of the things that the, the COGS are pushing is the ability for towns to combine resources. So, the list in your packet is what I supplied him. And that is basically all I have right now for the, for you know, my presentation unless you all have questions for me.
You, how was the survey coming along?
Uh, the survey is coming along pretty good. I was supposed to have by the end of today or tomorrow, a the final boundary, not final, but pretty close to final boundary survey with the overlay of where the community center will fit on the property. So, I don't have it, but I'm anticipating having that tomorrow.
Is, is the engineering done for the Hudson Road Culvert, all of it's done yet?
Uh, no. No, it's definitely not done.
A new engineering firm is gonna be working on that?
Yes, what they're going to do is they're going to do everything they have to do to get a full-blown application before the State, for the State Local Bridge Program. And the reason we're, we're getting both culverts to that point is because there, there's still a reasonable chance that they're going to add additional funding to that program. And if they sweeten the deal and increase the State's share of funding for that, which there's some talk of right now, I want both of those ready to go, so we submit them both, you know, pretty much as soon as that becomes available.
Right.
So, that's kind of why I'm taking the approach I'm taking on that.
Is, is the, at the old firehouse, is that survey all completed also?
Yes, yes, we did finally get the foundation design from B S C Consulting or B S C Engineering.
And they found that last corner, wherever it was?
Yeah, as far as I know, their, their boundary survey for that is complete. They have no issues with it.
So, did I understand you to say, Eric, that you're going to have the survey for the, the school road property tomorrow? Is that the?
The surveyor, Mike Keely, said he was hoping to have the, a copy. It won't be a finalized copy. What they were waiting on is they were waiting on one of the final pieces they had do was the Algonquin Gas Company had to come in, and they have to flag their right-of-way, which they did about a week ago. And then the surveyor had to come in and identify the legal limits of the Algonquin Gas right-of-way. So, I think Mike said he had, they got the majority of it, the one quarter, the farthest by the school. You know, I think still needs a little bit of work. So, it's, it sounded to me like he still had a couple, couple of hours, like one or two to fully complete the fieldwork.
So, is the Algonquin gas line, is there a description of that somewhere, like a deed description of where their easement is?
There is. But I'm, I don't know off the top of my head, but I would assume they would have had to file a description for that when they, when they got it.
Uh, anyone else have any more questions for Eric? Okay, Eric, thank you very much. And Eric, one thing that I, I think is great was there's probably five or six grants that you have pending and moving forward. I think that's great that, that you're, your office and you are, are completing all of those grants because they're really a good way for us to attempt to fund things within the community. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Eric. You do a great job with that.
Just understand when I'm in grant writing mode, unfortunately, I'm neglecting other things. So, so it's a trade-off, but it's something we need.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to item nine, old business. Those are the replacement items that I had sent you with exception C. So, we're gonna go to nine A and discuss the Freightliner of Hartford. So, I will make a resolution to finance the purchase of a plow truck expected to be received in late twenty twenty-three for a period of five years as presented by Public Works Director Jay Tuttle at the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Refer the matter for Board of Finance approval, hopefully a special Board of Finance meeting on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And if so, approve to a special town meeting, hopefully on February seventh, twenty twenty-three, or soon thereafter as possible. So, wanna second that?
I'll second it.
All right, further discussion. We've discussed this issue at our last meeting. We all know that Jay had presented this to us. I believe, Eric, that the Capital Improvement Committee has approved this. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any other questions related to this item? All right, all those in favor?
Oh, I had, I had a question. Sorry.
You were unmuted. Well, we'll rescind, I'll rescind my vote. Apology.
Just for a recap, because I know we talked, we talked about it a little bit last month, but Jeff Murray wasn't on the call. So, as a recap, this is not, this is gonna go on next year's budget, or just remind me again where the money's coming from for this?
Well, if I remember correctly, Eric, this is next year's budget.
It is and it's not. So, here's, here's the dilemma. In order for us, we can't buy this thing outright. There are around two hundred and sixty thousand bucks to buy. We, we don't have this year, and we're certainly not gonna have next year when we add money to it, enough money for an outright purchase. So, we're gonna have to lease to purchase. And the, the best way to do it is probably to select either a four-year or five-year, and I would select a five-year, actually. You know, lease option on that. The, the problem is that for the bank to guarantee financing, we have to escrow and to get a build slot for this thing, we have to escrow essentially one year's worth of payments. So, we have to escrow currently about sixty thousand dollars to get our build slot in to guarantee this. You know, right now. So, the problem is, we don't have that in the Public Works, the Public Works Fund. So, there, that leaves us two options to get the rest of the money. Reasonable options that I know of anyway. The first is to take the money from Town Aid Road, which we can legally do because you are allowed to buy equipment used by Public Works from the Town Aid Road Fund. We don't have a lot of money left in that fund, but we have enough to cover. The second thing would be to take it out of contingency. And then later in the meeting, we also need to talk about the third kind of monkey wrench, and that is the purchase of a trailer for the new piece of equipment that we've gotten, which is the, the Bob, you know, the Bobcat we just got. So, because that adds somewhere around eleven thousand dollars, we could still take it from Town Aid Road, but we're definitely cutting into our abilities to do road work in the spring if we do that. So.
So, let's, let's address, let's address Paula's very pertinent question. The first payment on the Freightliner of Hartford is out of which budget cycle? This current budget cycle.
Current budget cycle.
The first payment, the first sixty thousand dollars on a potential five-year amortization.
That's true.
And so we need, and what I understood from last, the last meeting is we need to do it now to get the build slot, which was the most important thing that everybody wanted.
It was a timing issue, correct?
Yes, correct. Correct. We want to get it, and we want to get it timely for next snow season. We've gotta be in line right now. Correct. Okay. So, we can figure out a way, and when you say escrow, Eric, we just have to prove that we have the funds, or we have to prove that we've, we've committed the funds for availability?
It would go into escrow with the finance company through Dahmer.
So, you're telling me the finance company is gonna hold our sixty thousand as a down payment?
That's my understanding, yep. So, a check wouldn't be? So check wouldn't be get asked.
Yeah, I would ask you to work on that one to sit there and see what they're really doing. But yes, I I would understand it. So, okay. So Paula, it's going to come out of this year's budget. So we have to find it, whether it's through contingency or it's through Town Aid Road, which I would go through Town Aid Road. Okay.
Any other questions?
How's that going to impact our roadwork budget come the spring?
It's definitely going to impact it. Um, right now, today, um, between all our roadwork. Funds. We have roughly forty thousand dollars remaining. So depending on whether we buy the tilt trailer this year also or not. Um, we're going to spend. A significant fraction of that. We should, if the bond commission approves it, when they should. At some point in the next couple of months, we should get another ninety three thousand dollar allotment. Which is our second allotment for the year for Town Aid Road. But I asked, and at this point, there's no schedule for the bond mission meet. So I don't know when we're getting that. Um, so as most of you know, usually what we try to do is we try to do the uh initial stimming. Um, prior to July one. Um, and by having money available early, which a lot of towns does. It allows us to get quite a bit done before the July one budget appropriation. So we're going to be a lot more limited this year than we were in the past. Because last year, honestly, we just spent a ton of money on roadwork, which is good. We got a lot done. But um, it's going to be more problematic this year. And Jay can probably give you a better feel for what impact that will actually.
And soon, well, and so the hope is, the hope is this budget cycle, we're going to put that line item in the public works. For this truck and then that money with the the Town Aid Road money would get freed up in the summer. Is that the hope?
Uh, yes, that's the hope. It uh, depending how everything all plays out. Um. Either we get a late start or it's going to be a year of uh of a lot of. Uh, preparation, maintenance work into, you know. Work at another time. Well, uh, let let. It's just gonna, we're gonna have to scale back on some of our work. That's what, that's what the bottom lines be.
Let's not scale, let's not think that way. Let's think a little bit differently about this escrow payment. The escrow payment in essence is really a down payment. It's a deposit. It's not an expenditure of money. We are just doing the approval. We have plenty of 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 resources available at the town to make a deposit. And an and as a deposit on on a vehicle that would not impact. Town Aid Road really, so I rethought my my original answer, so.
Yeah, Jeff, could we use contingency just as a placeholder?
Well, why can't we just use our money?
That's what I'm saying. Why don't we borrow?
Why take it out of contingency? Why not take it out of 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 our cash? Resources are the money.
Fun balance or fun balance even just. Because it's because we're not spending that money, we're just using it as a whole.
We're using it as a whole. So we're going to a town meeting. To get the town to commit to allow us to do this for the next fiscal year. Which we will then put it in the vis- the the budget for the the next year's. Next year's budget, the sixty thousand dollars that would be required to pay. So all we have to do is figure out the technical side of using town fund balance uh. As a as a down payment and as an expert. And I do think we should be able to do that. I think we should have get it approved by the Board of Finance, but.
I agree too. I think and I think this should be, we should, we should turn this over to the Board of Finance and let them uh look into this situation.
I mean, if it's a down payment, it's not, it's not, the the expenditure is not going to be required until. The vehicle becomes ours.
And we've been doing, so we've been doing such a good job with with the roadwork lately. I don't want to impact that by by taking from that fund. So that that concerns me a little bit.
So Eric, when we do approve this this motion, uh, can you put it into the Board of Finance's hands? That what we'd like to do is use fund balances at down payment uh to manage the escrow requirement. So that it has no impact on the current fiscal year budget. Okay, um. We want to vote on this all and uh we'll take a vote all in favor. I.
I. So are we voting, are we voting with the explicit um condition that it's going to be taken from fund balance?
Correct, we're asking, well, what we'll do, Jeff, and the the explicit request is to ask the Board of Finance to find a way to do it. Without impacting this fiscal year's budget. They may come back to us. And when's the deadline on this, Jay or Eric?
Well, the deadline is January fifth. For the, for this current, for this current proposal as far as the rates and what, so. Basically, they'll just have to uh readjust. Whatever the uh.
Interest rate.
Interest rates would be, so it could be a little more, it could be a little less, but it's still right around a sixty thousand dollar.
All right, but we want to get in line, so the the issue would be. We want to use fund balance for the escrow. That's what we'd like to do.
And I will support that. I will not support using Town Aid Road though, however.
That's fine. So that's the, that's the request off to the Board of Finance and let's sit there and see. If we can get it done appropriately, because we definitely have the fund balance to get this done. Okay, to move on to item nine B, new community senior center resolution, the resolution to approve. The offer of the proposed ten thousand dollar interim contract for various design items with leading edge construction. Is recommended by the town administrator and set forth on pages forty six and forty seven of the packet for the January ninth twenty twenty three meeting.
You want me to share my screen? Bring that up?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
If I got the right one? Okay, so this is what we uh had just discussed. Which is a contract whose goal is to uh cover. The contractor's cost to do, because this is going to take a few more joint scoping meetings between the town and the contractor. To fully flesh out uh both material specifications. Um, the final layout and design for the building, because we still have some options. We've got to work through for the flooring structure of the first floor. Um, and then final HVAC building at below bid finish specifications. So that's kind of where we're going with that. Uh, the goal is to reimburse them for their town time because. You know, they've already put a lot of money into this project, you know, to get to this point, so they're not going to continue. Providing us with more information until we start paying. So this will be uh. Uh, we clearly stated that this is a preliminary design contract only. And that it's part of negotiating the final design build master contract. Um, and it's designed to be a fairly short duration, three month contract. Uh, that will be applied to the original design base bid of seven hundred eighty three thousand nine hundred ninety seven.
I thought we were going to make this a sixty day contract.
Oops. You're right, we did discuss that. Although I'm not sure sixty days is all that realistic, three months is probably more likely, but. Uh. We can change that to a sixty day contract if you prefer.
Well, my my issue is can they get the work done in sixty days or will it take them ninety days? I mean. I'm always, let's go faster and try to figure this out. At least it puts it in a better position to to move forward with the building when we're ready. If they can't get it done in sixty days, make it ninety. But if they can get it done in sixty days and it's just giving them an extra thirty days, make it sixty.
I can ask for an extension.
I like how you're thinking, Scott.
Okay.
All right. Um. Anybody have any questions related to this resolution? Or this contract? All right, so. Resolution to approve the offer of the proposed ten thousand interim contract for various design items of leadage construction. Is recommended by the town administrator and set forth uh on the uh contract in front of us. All those in favor? I.
Hi.
I.
Okay, nine D, a resolution to accept a s- accept a steep grant for two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. With a seventy five thousand dollar town match. For the construction of a multi-use with for the construction of a building. On the Center Street property for the storage of uh town vehicles.
Okay, so I'll give you the background. We already have the steep grant. Um, so that's the good news. The the bad news is when we were reviewing the charter specifically for. The purchase of the plow truck. One of the things I realized in the charter is that uh under. Section three point oh four special town meetings. One of the things that is required to go to special town meeting, which is nuts, but it's what's in the charter. The application for participation in any federal, state or private grant in excess of twenty five hundred dollars. Excluding the Board of Education, which participation shall require the town to contribute any cash or in kind participation. To enter into the grant program. What that means frankly is that almost any grant I apply for has to go to special town meeting. Um, which is nuts. But it's also what our governing documents require. And since we're going to town meeting for the plow truck, we might as well do all three of the ones that we have before us. Which would be the accept acceptance of the steep grant. Um, and then the application to the trip grant for roadwork and the uh. Uh, and the third one, which is the recreation trails grant. So that will get us basically everything that we're applying for right now would be legal if we go to town meeting. Because we're going to town meeting anyway.
So that's the stingy clause in the in the charter and we're going to just sit there and get through it. So, all right. So anybody have any other questions related to nine D?
Yeah, am I following this? So anytime you have to. We we have to go to town meeting every time for a grant? Is that what you said?
No, no, that's not what he said. It's a, it's a grant, it's a grant that the town has to spend its own rest money on. So you get the grant, so in this case, this is a grant with a match from the town. So if you have outgoing money for the town, you have to spend it. So and Eric is not wrong that it's basically every grant, but Eric, you probably applied for grants in the last year that we haven't. The town hasn't had to put up any money for it. So that type of grant would not be required to go to town meeting. But a grant that spends more than twenty five hundred dollars of the town's money has to go to town.
Understood, okay, I missed that part.
In this case, you're asking us, you're asking the town to contribute seventy five thousand dollars. Um, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar facility to store. Properly the town vans for the seniors.
Correct.
Okay.
And also mitigate the existing disaster that's there by tearing it down.
Yeah, that's right. And we're we're trying to do something, do something positive, so. Paula, you and I will sit there at the town meeting and we'll identify the real stingy people who wrote that part of the charter, right? And we'll identify them all and we'll just check them on and we'll sit there and know that they voted no.
So I I I don't know if I want to part in that, I'm sorry.
Oh, Paul, I know you will take part, I do know that. So, all right, so um if somebody, Scott, did you second that? No, I didn't really, I just read, so uh let me, let me go back through and make the resolution actually. We're going to do a resolution to accept a steep grant for two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. With a seventy five thousand dollar town match. For the purposes of building a building to house the town vehicles. You know, we're going to refer this to the Board of Finance and town meeting in accordance with the foregoing schedules set forth. In item nine A. Dennis, I don't like that. So for referral to the Board of Finance and a town meeting.
I didn't know the date at the time I wrote this.
Okay.
Okay.
I I accept your apology.
Sorry, sorry. That's, I I couldn't resist.
All right, who's second in this? Let's go. We're on an hour and a half, who's second in this?
I'll second it.
All right, uh, all those in favor? I.
Hi.
I.
Four, four nothing again, Eric. We're we're doing pretty good. Um, a resolution to authorize the town administrator to submit a DEEP Recreation's Trail Grant Proposal for fifty two thousand dollars. With a town uh spending approximately ten thousand five hundred dollars in tax dollars. Possibly open space or contingent P C funds. We're going to refer this to the Board of Finance and town meeting in accordance with um the town charter. Who's second in this one?
I'll second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
I.
Right, four nothing again. Um, resolution to authorize the town administrator to submit a trip grant. The Transportation Rural Improvement Program for up to eight hundred thousand dollars. By which the town will be required to pay for survey and engineering costs outside of the grant estimated to be. Uh, ou- outside of the grant estimated to be thirty thousand dollars. This is to be paid from Town Aid Road or Road Improvement Fund. We're going to refer this to the Board of Finance and the town meeting in accordance with the town charter.
I'll second.
All those in favor? I.
Hi.
I.
Okay, um, now we're down to our regular old items. Uh, nine G, the Finance Department employment situation status, Eric?
So at the last uh meeting. You asked me to hold off until the January meeting to post for the finance position. Um, do you have any objection to me submitting that now and getting that going?
No, because it's probably going to take you three or four weeks to get this done and by that time, QuickBooks will be up and running, right?
That would be the goal, certainly.
Okay, does anybody have a problem with Eric moving forward with that position?
Nope.
The only, the only change I would like to implement in that is as Diane Choquet wrote that originally. It was uh identified as a forty hour week position. I would like to take that down to a thirty four hour week position. I don't think it needs to be a five day position. I think four should be plenty for that.
Thirty four is where you want to be with that position?
I don't think it needs to be more than thirty four.
It doesn't need to be more than thirty four. Do we want to start at thirty four or do we want to start lower and build them up?
You think it should be, Jeff?
Um, I always believe that once you got the right software in place, the amount of time that that department will have to spend on. The functional. Operations of the. The town will be greatly reduced. I would tell you, Scott, I would expect it to be, now, listen, I'm okay with thirty four hours. If the person is willing to move from department to department to sit there and assist. If the person is only going to sit in the finance department, thirty four hours is overkill for that job. That's just my opinion, I'm only one person, but. Next, I understand. Technically what that person's going to end up doing operationally now. That's just, that's me, so I would tell you that's a twenty. And I'm assuming that this is the bookkeeper Eric.
Correct. Correct.
So this is the person. Who is running the accounts payable. And this is the person that is managing that town payroll every other week. And posting the journal entries into QuickBooks related to.
Correct.
Alright. Twenty hours.
So how many hours do you think you can be done in Jeff?
Depends upon who you let have the job.
Jeff could do it in twenty hours.
Oh no, it would take a lot less than that.
Five hours? So did Diane put it at forty because? She was thinking?
No, Diane, there, listen. The person that gets that job, uh, I mean Diane was doing a great job, I mean she was trying to organize the department and that, that department and to. Put forth, uh, appropriate procedures to allow that person to, to be more efficient, but it's a, it's a question of efficiency, it's just a question of. Of what's there, I don't, I would not expect someone to. Do it in ten hours because they'd make themselves obsolete and you know they. That's just not how people work, it's gonna be a twenty to thirty-four hour, a job, an hour, job per week. Um, I personally would start it lower and then build it up, but I know what Eric is thinking and I'm okay with thirty-four hours, but.
But I always started at thirty. I'm fine with that.
Well, the issue, the issue on time is. What? And, and let's ask, is that, is that position part of the union?
It is.
Okay, what are we, what are we under the union contract related to?
So, under the original union contract. It was a thirty-hour position. However, we have a memorandum of understanding to employ Marina back when she was. Which was the last thing on the books at forty hours a week. So I think we can legitimately argue with the union that we take it back to a thirty-hour position if that's what you want. Um, I don't see any reason why that couldn't happen. Um, lower than that, I'm not saying we couldn't do it, it would be a fight and it would, might be harder to find an employee. But maybe not, maybe we find somebody that's retired and only looking for twenty hours a week.
Well, if it's under, if it's under the. That position and it should be thirty hours, because the reason why Marina and, and the reason why that position was. You know, expanded at that point in time was because the software that we were, we were operating with and the amount of time to try to, to get. Things organized within that department. I, I'm just telling everybody that the software is gonna make. Everybody's life easier in that department. It'll make Eric's life easier, it will, you know, there'll be some. I, I would, always the concept, uh, you know, related to the software discussions was workarounds, well, I don't care what software you have, you always have. I mean, you have software workarounds and admins, you're gonna have software workarounds and QuickBooks. But it's just a lot easier to figure out a workaround in QuickBooks than it is in one of the other types of software, so thirty.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any issues related to that?
Oh.
Okay, good. Uh, nine H, the status of the finance official?
Oh. Um, I think I've already said all I want about that. Um, we have had a, well, we have had a long discussion, uh. You know, with Mike, the auditor, um. Just before the holidays. Uh, and kind of worked out, you know, kind of where we are and what we needed for the audit, so I think we're tracking reasonably well by then. You know. Mike's not ready to start it yet anyway. Um, and we're not ready for him to start it, uh, but. Um, you know, we will get it done more timely this year than we did last year. Um, and at that point, that's all I can really tell you at this point.
Okay. Uh, nine I, Hop River Homes, do we have an update on that? I did not see a contract in here.
I believe there was one in the packet.
In the packet.
It was? I missed that.
This is in the package, Jeff.
I couldn't get, oh, there it is, my bad, yeah.
Well.
I couldn't get past Jay's, I couldn't get past Jay's Freightliner quote. It was about four. It was about four pages long.
I couldn't resist trying once again to, uh. This final in accordance with the discussions that you all have had with. Uh, the, the people from Eastern Connecticut Housing Organization. And, uh, the only thing that is noteworthy really. You know, it's a three-year contract as you. Proposed, but the. They added something to second page. Regarding improvements. Progress seven. After speaking with Eric about it and reading some, uh, notes. Uh, I added, uh, language saying that, uh. Uh, in order to provide sources of water and electricity to the ball field. HRH River Homes will permit the town with due care and workmanship. Trench across Riverside Drive. And HRH property to install a water spigot. An electrical outlet there to be supplied from town-owned locations south of Riverside Drive. And you know. They don't like that, we can always take it out. And we can go to them, you know, we can go to them with a proposal, a more specific proposal, but I thought we should try to just put it in this contract.
Okay, so Eric can. I mean, I, I. I don't have a problem with the contract as written, I mean, does anyone else here have a problem with this contract as written?
You, you couldn't get them to change or was it you Dennis that won't change on the usage and who? Who can use it?
Um. That, that came from discussions that you all had with them, I wasn't part of that meeting.
That's the same language. The, the same language as the last one, we were trying to change that.
No, this one allows the girl softball U-18 there.
Right, right.
What did it allow? Scott, what Scott is asking is, Scott, Scott was asking for. All age groups to be able to use that field. You know, uh, the Hop River Homes group would like it to be just youth because, and, and, and children because. They don't want balls hit over the fence that, which is understandable.
They don't want you guys going there and knocking the ball, you know, five hundred feet.
Don't worry, that ain't happening, it didn't happen when I was eighteen, it's not happening when I was fifteen, so. Um.
I mean, you know, we, we could try to change. I read. Pretty insistent on it.
That's fine, uh, Scott, I think we should allow this, this first one to go and then make, uh, changes as, as we.
I think, I think that that's in there, that they're open to, uh. Um, suggestions at the end of the contract that said something about that.
Yeah, so, um. Eric, can you get this in front of Hop River Homes and sit there and see? And, and quickly see if they have comments and if we can get this signed, because it's going to take them ages to get it through USDA. And we need to get that in place before, uh, March. Because the baseball season will start the fifteenth.
Yep.
Yeah, alright, I'm sorry, the softball season, my bad, the fifteenth.
Oh, don't get them all freaked out, drop there with a, a baseball, you know, I'm really on the ropes.
I know, I know. That's alright, no one could hit it over the fence anyway.
Field of dreams.
Yes. Um, okay, so, um. We're, we're now on to, um. Uh, nine J, recognizing Endover residents, Paul, do you have an update on that or do you wanna put that off?
Yeah, let's put that off, we need another month, I think.
Nine K, uh, cool program contract update, Eric, anything on that?
Okay, so I CC you, um. Uh, what I did was, uh, after the last meeting, we went back to Jess Carrier and. And Dennis and I discussed it a little bit. And, you know, they were. I would say argumentative, that's not the word I wanna use, but I'll go with argumentative. So what I said to Jess was that they needed to provide us with a series of things. Um, one of them being a copy of their actual insurance policy. Not just the, you know, the front page, which doesn't have any details. Um, and it needed to include coverage for them while they're driving the bus. Um, if we're going to loan them a bus. And that, uh, you know, they needed to develop the next draft. Because I think, you know, we've put enough drafts out there and they basically flatly rejected all, so. I put the ball in their court and said, if that's something they wanna pursue, they can come back to us with a draft and we'll review it.
Okay.
That's where I left it with that.
Alright, I, I don't have any problem with that, the biggest issue that, that I have is, um. Making sure that we, uh, incorporate Kerma into the review of the insurances and all of the other issues, so.
Yeah, we've done that, Jeff, uh. Done that, I incorporated what Kerma suggested in the latest draft. I think the issue is, and I, I did watch the, uh. Video of, of your meeting on the, I was away and, I'm kind of Lulu. Uh, what I, what I saw was, uh, they don't seem to understand, they're dealing with the board event. And they, they don't seem to, they don't seem to understand that the, 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 the property is owned. Cool property is owned, actually owned by the town. That we're responsible for it and we're insuring it. Uh, the town is paying for the insurance for the property. So we have, we have more of a stake in this than they seem to. Understand, but I, I know, you know, I understand where they're coming from, they're doing a great job for kids. And they think that we're giving them a hard time and I, I think we just need to, you know, make them. Comfortable with some of the things that you've said, that we really appreciate what they're doing. But we really need to protect, uh, you know, the town and the taxpayers. For covering the insurance. So, you know, I think we should be able to come to some kind of an agreement fairly soon.
I, I think we'll be fine, I think the biggest issue Dennis is just insurance, I mean, they're gonna be using a town vehicle, they're, they're using town.
Absolutely.
Assets. And, and it's fine, just get the insurance set and I'll, I'll be okay, you know, I, I personally will be okay, get the insurance organized correctly. Um. There is, you know, there's, there's a lot of misunderstanding and, 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 and from my standpoint. I mean, and I will, I will say this again on record, my issue is that. The after-school program is, is a vehicle for the community in the town to run a better recreation department. That's just as simple as I can make it, I, I, it has nothing to do with who is involved in cool and not in cool, it, it has not, that is not what I'm, I'm talking about, I'm just saying. That if the town looked at it as a, an opportunity to. Expand its service offering, that is a way to do it, cause currently right now. They're doing a great job and that program is, um. To say it nicely from my accounting standpoint, it's a for-profit, not-for-profit. I mean, and that's how all not-for-profits are and anyone who sits there and wants to have the argument with me can have the arguments with me. That every not prof, not-for-profit is for-profit for somebody. And that's just my opinion as an accountant, going through it. So, and it's not to sit there and say they don't do great work. But somebody's making.
I agree with you Jeff, I worked for a nonprofit for twenty-three years, understand what you're saying. But I understand that they are, you know, they're doing a great job for kids. So we wanna be supportive, but we're not going to, uh, you know, allow them to do whatever they want, that's.
Well, I just don't want them, I just don't want them to, to, you know, God forbid have an accident and then it all comes back upon us that we didn't do our jobs correctly and that there's now. A parent who's, who's gonna sit there and want to sue the town because of our negligence, that, that, that doesn't work for me, so that, that's all we're after right now is. You know, my idea, my idea of a program is, is a secondary issue, the issue right now in front of us is they're doing a good job. We're not gonna impact parents, we're not gonna impact kids. We're, we're, we're gonna sit there and do what's right, but get the insurance organized and then we'll be all good.
I, yeah.
Eric and I, Eric and I can work together on that.
My only request is, and I, I, I think they understand now. And. My only request is, if, if there's emails going back and forth and we're not getting this. You know, resolved or whatever, can you just, Eric, can you call a meeting with them just so that. You're not going back and forth with fifty emails and things are getting dragged out, so. They're, you know, they're, they're great people, they're doing a great job, I just wanna make sure. We're, we're doing the best thing we can do for the town and. Where they understand where we're coming from, because sometimes when you go back and forth on the email, maybe. Things get missed or misunderstood, so that's my only request.
Eric, make sure you do what Paul's asking, she's very important. Alright.
Sounds, sounds good to me too.
Alright, well, excuse me. Um, so, uh, nine L, zoning changes to the town property on the school road update.
Okay, so real quick, on January twenty-third at seven PM, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be considering. The zone change to the Endover Rural Design District. Uh, that would enable the, uh, town hall. To build without seeking a variance for the building. That's it.
Okay. Um. Just as a question, the rural design, what was that called?
Endover Rural Design District.
Wow, that's a really catchy title, who came up with that one Eric?
Me.
Good job, I'm impressed, rural design district, I like that, very, very, very positive, very positive. Uh, so it's a fancy way of saying that, um. It's zoned for housing and we built all these municipal buildings.
Correct, so.
Could be.
It became that name because the town originally had an R40, basically a one-acre zoning district. And a two-acre zoning district for residential construction. And what the Planning and Zoning Commission did was they changed both of those zones into, uh, the ARD, the single ARD zone. And then they allowed the flexibility to build cluster housing. Uh, or do a cluster development within that zone. With some additional open space if you went that option.
Right.
So that's been on the books for about three years, something like that.
Okay. Alright, uh, we have, uh, so are we done with nine L, Eric, just so I don't miss anything, alright, so we'll go to nine M. The eight twenty-four referrals to planning and zoning for proposed new community center building.
Uh, so that was the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting. Uh, received an eight twenty-four referral on behalf of the Board of Selectmen from myself. Um, to answer the question, does the plan of conservation and development agree with. Locating a, uh, community center on that parcel directly behind the town hall. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, voted that it did. And referred that via letter from Jed back to the Board of Selectmen. Um, and the advantage of that is that means when we go to, uh, well, actually. I won't say that, the advantage of it is that any decision that the Board of Selectmen makes regarding the community center. Can be approved by a simple majority, not a two-thirds majority, because the zoning commission concurs with that.
Okay. Alright, thank you, I'll move on to item ten, new business, uh, to discuss and act upon following, uh, ten A, Constantine paving appeal.
I'm gonna turn this one over to Jed, or sorry, to Jay, cause this is his, uh, area of expertise.
Okay.
Can't wait. What do you got, Jay?
Alright, uh, first of all, I'd like to ask, is anybody here from Constantine? Or did they just? Ask for this to be on the agenda?
Well, let's just review it quickly so we know what we're doing.
Okay. So, um. This is, this is in regards to thirteen Dogwood Drive, um. Constantine was a contractor for this, uh. Um. Resident. And. The driveway, if you look at. Um, resident and the driveway, if you look at.
Can you share that, Eric? That diagram?
Uh. Yeah, I, I will share it. Uh.
It's page eighty in your packet?
Seventy-four, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight. Okay, got it.
Hey, this is the one you want to see?
Yeah, well, just looking at the, uh, the original plans, design of the driveway. Um, so if. If you're familiar with the, uh, development. It uses, uh, an off road swale. Uh, there's also sidewalks in that neighborhood. Um, so the water course is a swale that travels each side of the roadway. And each driveway actually has a swale built into it. It's about, you know, between fifteen and twenty feet off the, uh, from the road edge. Um, the basins that follow the roadway, uh, along the roadway are actually off-road basins. Their C G top style, which is a, a double curb, I call them. And.
They're in the middle of the swale?
Yes. So, and they're off-road. So when they did this driveway, um, I initially went out. To, to view it. And I drew on the, the existing driveway at the time, you know, I put down. In paint swale with some arrows. And, uh, you know, and I left it at that, signed the permit and let them go to town. So when they called and asked if, uh, to go, uh, review the job. Uh, the swale was not put back into the driveway. Um, the water cannot leave the driveway into the roadway and water from the roadway will not enter the driveway. Um. That being said. The swale not being there basically doesn't allow the watershed continuous flow. That, as water would, you know, um. To continue down the other side. The kicker to this and their argument, and it's valid, uh, to some degree. The driveway is actually a, a high point. The basin that you see, if you're looking on the page eighty. All right. The basin lower towards the bottom of the page, that little square.
Yep.
That basin is a little bit lower than the driveway. So any water that would be captured at the driveway flows back to the basin. The opposite side of the driveway actually goes the other way.
Did you go up there and look at that though?
Yes, I did.
And there's water, did you see water doing what you're talking about?
Yeah, water, water's not going to accumulate, um. And, and puddle in that area. It's either going to go one way or the other. So, but the, the original design of the community is that these driveways have swales in them. So I didn't sign off on it right away. I re- I'm referring it back to the selectmen. If you drive around the neighborhood, you'll see or find other driveways that have been done in the past. Been redone, that the swales were not put back in. Why? I don't know. Wasn't, I wasn't there. Um, so, uh. Kind of leaving it up to you to decide whether we sign off on it, uh, give them their five hundred bucks back. I, I don't see. Any detriment to the function of the swales because it is a high point. Um, but, you know, if you read, if you read the permit. Um, and the instructions, it's. It tells you right there at number one, you know, the driveway shall be constructed in such a manner that that does not interfere with the existing drainage. The movement of traffic or removal of snow from public highway. And there's some other things defining things in there either, uh, I mean, as well. So it's not really interfering with anything, but it wasn't put back to original design either. So that's my take on it. Um. I wasn't sure how, you know, how you guys, you would stand on that, uh, being that it's not. It's not part of the original design.
And you've been up there lately and it is draining on both ways?
Yeah, the dri- like I said, the driveway is a little bit higher. I mean, it's ever so slightly. Water will go one way and water will go the other way. And it won't. So on the lower side where the sea, where the basin actually is. You know, water comes from the neighbors and comes down and goes into that basin. If the basin. Were, let's say the basin got plugged up. Lea- leaves or whatever, I s- I suppose. Water would accumulate there and eventually it would force itself and go over the driveway and keep going. But right now it's fine. And the bases, the basins are generally open. It's not like there's a ton of leaves or anything people mow around them.
How much bond money did you get from them?
Five hundred dollars.
Jay, um, what's the possibility that water can run off the driveway into the street?
Uh, it, it actually either stays in the swale or tips back towards the property a little bit.
I mean, I'm, I'm right up the street, so I'm familiar with this issue.
Yeah.
Um, my neighbor, you know, with the mailbox, um, that we removed this year. Um, that was a problem with water coming out into the roadway, um, because it was blocking the swale. Um, I haven't really seen this. I wasn't, I was unaware of this issue. But there is a lot of houses in that neighborhood that do have this problem with water running out into the roadway. Because of these swales issues that have been modified. So I, I hear your point, but. It's, it's difficult to kind of let this go, on the other hand.
Jay, what, what would you vote?
I'm, to be honest with you, I'm on the fence about it because in, in one sense it works. Um, you know, they did, they did do a good job. I, you know, I'm not going to deny that they did an okay job. But it's not put back to design and that's, you know, uh, you can argue both ways. Um, you know, right now, what's going to end up happening, uh, if. You know, they're going to have to go back to the customer and say, well, we're going to have to cut the driveway. And, and, uh, now we're going to have a patch in the middle of your driveway, just so we can get our five hundred bucks back. So to put the swale back.
And, and you were very clear with them, uh, how they had to do it, right?
Well, yeah. I didn't take pictures of it, Scott. Um, I didn't communicate with them other than I put the drawing, I painted. On the ground, uh. Where the swale was when I initially went out and did the driveway. I, I marked it. I wrote swale. I put arrows to the, you know, each way, um, you know, whether the crew showed up and. And I discussed that with the guy too, and you know. Uh, fault me for not taking pictures and making notes, but I, you know, I did. I did sign the permit for them to do the work and I conveyed to, uh, um. Lynn, you know, that, call them up and let them know that it's ready to go. So.
One is, one issue we do have is when we get a lot of snowfall and the snow piles do come up. It does impact the drainage if, when we have issues like this with the swell being impeded. Um, I've seen it quite a few times on that street, uh, when we get, when we have a lot of snowbanks. So.
How many other, how many other driveways down there, Jeff, are, have this same issue?
None that I'm aware of, because the swale usually is on that upper side of the road and then. There, every, every driveway does not have a, um, some of the ones on Woodford on the. Other side of me do not have swales. Um, just my side does with the culverts. So some do, some don't, um.
Yeah, if you're downhill from the road, you wouldn't necessarily have a swale.
But this is a main drain to that, uh, uh, settling pond that's down the street on Dogwood.
Yeah.
All that water runs to that settling pond. So, you know, on the way that the road tips, there's this potential that we could get some freezing and some water on that roadway. If we have a heavy snow event with a lot of snow banks. I mean, I've seen it in the past happen. So.
That, and then, and that's going to happen anywhere. Um, with the, with the snow melt and some of the driveways, uh, yeah, there's. You know, where the grass has grown over the years and, you know, just had the swale hasn't been maintained on people's driveways.
I mean, we had, we had the issue with my neighbor when the large stone mailbox that they put in, they basically blocked the swale. And we had water running out into the road and, and it was, it was severe ice problem with that neighbor's driveway. And since that, since that's been removed, it's been rectified to some point, but, um. We still have some more grading that we need to do, but, I mean, the swales do do their job when they're installed correctly. I mean, I know I do have a swale in my driveway. And it does dry, it does come down my driveway and it does channel to the, you know, to the culverts and to the swale down, downward, not, not into the road.
So what's your take on this, Jeff Murray?
My point is those swales are pretty, I mean, since there is no culverts or drainage basins in the roadway. This is the, this is the drainage for the roadway, basically. So, um, and it keeps a lot of the water in the winter from running across the road from those houses that are above. So that swale catches a lot of the groundwater that runs, um, off of those properties on the top of Dogwood and Woodford Way. I mean, I have a ton of water on my property.
So the question is, are we giving them back their, their deposit or are we penalizing them for not following the rules? Are we requiring them to fix the job that they were supposed to do correctly? And then give them back their five hundred dollars?
I don't think they're coming back out to fix it. It would cost them a lot more than five hundred dollars to mobilize for a day. And they're going to have an unhappy resident if they come out and cut it open. So, but I also don't think like. If Jay told them what he wanted and they put in something different, they don't get their deposit back. That's my take on it. But ultimately that authority resides with the board of selectmen because this is a curb cut. And that is your, you have the authority to, to make those determinations.
I'm all for keeping money.
I just, I'm just afraid it's going to happen again, since this resident did it. It's, is, is the neighbor going to say, well, I want to do this too?
Exactly. That's what I'm afraid of too.
Create, it creates, it creates a, you know, it creates a.
Everybody's going to do it.
Because a lot of people don't like the swales. I mean, I, I personally, I mean, if I could get rid of my swale, I would. I mean, it's not. The best thing when you pull into your driveway, but, uh, I mean, they're there and they're needed and it's, 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 uh. It's a necessary.
The elevations on this, uh, on this lot and it, they're, it's almost flat. So it, it seems like they would eat that swale if it's in there, you know, you, it's being used. There's only a foot difference between where the house is and, you know, the location of that swale.
I mean, I mean, in the springs and when we get a heavy rain, those swales are full of water.
Yeah.
Absolutely full of water.
Well, that's why the builders called that development swampy acres.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of leaving it up to you guys. I, um. I, I'm on the fence, um, and I also tend to. The swale was there, why didn't you put it back? Or at least call me up and find it and ask me the question. So.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we table this until like April and you can get through your winter season and to determine. How much of a problem it can be or will be. And if it's not a problem in April, then we can sit there and say, okay. But in the future, uh, my recommendation is that everybody follows the rules.
Right. Again, it gets, it leads into, well, you let that guy slide, why won't you let me slide?
Yeah, and five hundred dollars is cheap. Five hundred dollars to me is cheap to get rid of a swale.
Yeah.
I, I put up the five hundred dollar, I'm serious. I put up the five hundred dollars to get rid of it. Because it's just give up the five hundred dollars, you lose it, who cares? That's what everybody else is going to do.
Jay, how do you determine the amount of the bond?
Uh, that's, that's what the town has in place.
That is, is that in the ordinance?
Yeah, that driveways are, uh, five hundred dollar bonds.
Probably in our well-written charter.
No, it's not in the charter.
I don't know. I, I don't know why we're, we're waiting until April to, for this, Jeff McGuire.
I mean, I think the contractor should fix it.
Or they forfeit their five hundred dollars.
Right.
But the town puts a couple of big, you know, uh, cement barriers at the end of the driveway and so you can't use the driveway until you fix it. You probably only have to do that once before everybody don't align.
Eric, you're, you're so willing to offer up the use of cement barriers. I think we need to have a conversation.
I do. The homeowner, uh, it's not the homeowner's fault. I mean, if they had to come and tear up the driveway again and repave it, it's, it's on the contractor. The contractor made an error.
All right, then go back to.
Right, but the contractor's probably been paid. So short of speaking with contractor, what recourse do you have? Your only real recourse is not giving them their deposit back. That's the unfortunate reality.
All right, tell them to fix it. And my vote is to tell them to fix it.
I'd second that.
And if they, okay.
Anybody else?
They don't do business in Endover again.
Why? It's not that you don't do business in Endover again, you just do it right. I mean, it's not like we're.
Yeah, if we have, but if we have a, a contractor that doesn't make good on their bond and it doesn't make good on their work and forfeits their bond, then. It's an issue.
Okay. That's a, that is a good decision, Jeff, I think, yeah. Does anybody else? Paul, uh, do you have a problem with that?
No. I think you ask for, listen, you always ask for more. Come on, Jeff, didn't you say that early? And then you lead up to, then you fix it afterwards. You ask for more and see what they say.
Well, you asked for forgiveness. So what this person is doing is asking for forgiveness and they want their five hundred dollars back.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, one of the, the other things you could do is the board could decide that. In the case like this, where you have somebody that doesn't do what they said, the next time the cost of the bond increases. So charge them fifteen hundred bucks for the bond the next time, or three thousand, that'll get their pension.
Yeah, they gotta, you gotta make it right.
I believe that we should uphold our regulations. I, we, we don't do many times. Okay. Ask them to fix it, Jay.
Okay, I will ask them to fix it. Thank you.
Ten B, the, uh, Department of Public Works tilt trailer.
Yes.
I'm giving this one to Jay too.
So tilt, tilt trailer, page eighty-one. Starting. Eighty-one to eighty-seven in your packet, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep, I'm right.
Okay, so this goes back to our, uh, skid steer trailer purchase. Up to ninety thousand dollars was approved. Um, the skid steer, um, is. We've received it with the exception of the auger and all that should be, uh, by P O. Is seventy-five thousand and change. So the trailer, as you see, um, page eighty-one. Is available. Seven ton. Twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine. Twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, forty-six cents. So I added in a spare tire because I didn't have a spare tire for it, so um. And then the other trailers that are available. Uh, from the other companies are around between fourteen and fifteen thousand dollars. One of them I can't even get for a year and a half, maybe. Um. So that's uh, that's what I have proposed on this, the tilt trailer.
That the one that you picked, you, you picked the one with the, the deck in the front stays?
Yeah, the split deck tilt.
Yeah, you like that kind, Jay?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, because if you put in a, a, a separate implement. It stays on the deck while you pull the machine off, you know, it won't tilt with the, which gives an off balance of the machine. So if you, you know, you're going out with a couple of different implements. You can carry them both easily.
Oh, all right, yeah, those kinds slam a lot worse than the other kind though. When you're coming off of them.
Well, you just gotta go slow, it's a teeter totter.
Yep.
Plus, we can use it for other pieces of equipment.
Is this to replace something or is this is in order to use the equipment you have already?
Yes. So cur- currently, currently, we don't have a trailer to, to move the skid steer around, other than the, our big tag along. Um, we do currently have a landscape trailer, which is old and still usable. And we haven't really decided whether we would dismiss that or not, because that's a, a little bit smaller. And if we're just carrying around the uh, our steiner or some small mower, we'll probably just hang on to that. But um, but yeah, so it's, so it's an add-on.
Uh, how many pounds is that trailer?
The landscape trailer?
Yeah.
I think that's a, uh, wanna say a six thousand pound trailer, three ton, three, four ton trailer.
So, so Jay, just so I understand this, we, we authorize ninety thousand dollars for the purchase of the skid steer, correct?
Correct.
And.
And trailer.
And trailer, and is that?
Yeah.
Is this above and beyond our ninety thousand dollars that we authorize?
No, it's staying under the ninety thousand dollars.
And get it done.
Yeah, if we've already given the thumbs up, right?
Yeah, there's no action on our part.
Okay.
Is there anything required related to this, Eric, that we need to do other than sit there and say?
The reason why I thought that was valid for discussion was I was assuming you were gonna have to, if you take this. You just reduced by twelve and a half thousand dollars. How much is in the Public Works Equipment Fund? And that means that that's that much more town aid road money. Uh, that you would have had to utilize if you were planning on taking this. From unexpended fund balance and the Board of Finance agrees with you, then it doesn't have that impact.
But i- in a, in a broader, in a, in a different, we spent seventy-eight thousand dollars for a piece of equipment. That is not as usable because we don't have a trailer.
Right, it's got wheels, you can drive it.
Just get the trailer and let's go. All right.
Okay.
Any else, all right. So let's, let's move on to um. Ten C, additional sick leave request for an ask-me employee. Um, I would sit there and say that this is in our files. Um, we should review this and each one of us should contact Eric because we should discuss this in executive session. And I don't particularly want to go to executive session tonight. Uh, I assume that this, this uh, potential um, time off has um. Sixty days, ninety days potential related.
Yes.
So we have a little bit of time on this, so everybody, please speak with Eric about this. And then we'll do something in executive session if necessary.
Right?
Okay, um, and the discussion of senior transportation uh, and the electric vehicle for senior transportation. And to the disposition of the twen- two thousand and two twenty passenger van. So Eric, are you up or is this Kathy Blazi?
Uh, I think this is kind of both of us.
Let's go.
So, um, if you look farther on in your packet. Kathy gave uh, again, a monthly disposition of how many trips are being done for medicals. Um, we often have both vehicles or our small van. Um, minivan as well as one of the twelve passenger vans out. Uh, at the same time, or fifteen passenger vans out at the same time doing medicals. It's really inefficient to be doing a medical, you know, with one person on dragging them around in a fifteen passenger van. Um, it's a lot smarter because most of the people that are going. Don't require uh, you know, a handicap accessible vehicle. And all three of the vehicles we have now are handicap accessible. If we got a small electric vehicle, um, or theoretically a gas one, if you're really opposed to an electric vehicle. You could relieve some of the burden of that. Um, and you know, you would make the bigger vehicles last longer and you would go through less fuel. So that's my argument for doing that, uh, which was the same as I made last year.
I, I, I would ask you, um, we had installed electric, uh, electric charging station in town hall, correct?
Correct.
How often of a percentage do you see that being used?
Uh, depends, we have an electric car. We have not seen a heavy usage of it at this point.
Okay, and then a question related to that charging station, who's paying for the electricity?
At this very second, we are, but we have the ability. But the only reason we're still doing that is I've been curious to see how many people would actually use it. If it was a free charger and the answer is almost nobody at this point.
No one, no one in Andover. I've seen a car there, Eric, one.
Yeah, Robert Hamburger, whenever he comes to the town hall, he plugs it. Uh, but more because he can than, than actually needing it. He's the only person so far I've seen charged there at any time.
I, I think that, that, that Chevy Bolt SUV or whatever it is, small SUV would be perfect car. We could plug it in, we could plug it in when people are at the town hall and the community center and charge it and. Those are the vehicle, types of vehicles we should be using as much as possible for.
Exactly.
I would, I would buy a fleet of those if we had a grants that would allow us to buy them for free.
Yeah.
My only, I got, I got a question about the car in the packet. If we're gonna use this for people that are not handicapped. But we're using it for seniors, how is it easy to get in and out of the car? Has somebody thought about that or does Kathy have anything to weigh in? Just wanna make sure that it's comfortable for a senior to get in and out of the backseat. Because I'm not familiar with this car, but just wanna make sure that if we talking about it, that they can get into it without having trouble.
Paula, I also wanted to point out that uh, it's not just seniors who we are transporting. Uh, when people are disabled, we are transporting them, that would be any age group. Uh, if it, if they're under the age of eighteen, they have a caregiver with them or a parent. I just wanted to point out that we're also taking veterans to the uh, V A. And they are not always seniors, they, they're elderly, but they're not always seniors. Uh, the other thing is, the people that we're taking, that we would be taking in the car. Uh, at most, they possibly would have either a cane. Or they might have a uh, walker, which would be easily folded up and put into the trunk or in the backseat, whatever. But I don't think that you would have a, a problem uh, with most people. Most people could, would be able to walk themselves, get in and out of the car. I just wanted to point out, our transportation says senior transportation. But if you read our, my monthly reports, you'll see that we always take all disabled. And it happens that right now we have six people we're taking that are not, definitely not seniors.
Eric, I just have one question now, since we're gonna be taking seniors, I know we're gonna wanna keep this. Vehicle at a, at a temperature level that's very comfortable and. A lot of the electric uh, car drivers that we know of, they try to get enough range out of them as possible. Sacrifice a little bit with the heat, now what kind of range are we looking at if we're gonna utilize the heat on this vehicle? You know, to the extent that we'd wanna keep it in a seventy, seventy-five degree range for, for passengers.
So the, the first thing is that when we look at the, and Kathy can probably tell, what is the average length of a trip? That this vehicle goes out of?
Um, normally, um, the most. It, the, the highest level of mileage is thirty-five miles. Uh, that's one way, but the normal average is just about fifteen to twenty miles one way.
Right, so even if we're running three, three trips a day, you know, we're under what? You know, and if we're running three trips a day, there's no reason we can't charge it a little in between. So I don't think, I, I think this represents about as close to a perfect fit for an electric vehicle. You know, as there is, other than you deciding to buy one for the town administrator, which would be fine too, but I don't see that happening.
Well, that's just another question I have, is this something that we can utilize, that town employees can utilize too for, you know, if you need to go? You know, to, you know, out, out through town and then look at something, is this something you can utilize as well?
I think that, in my opinion, that would be a yes, is that correct, Eric? Uh, I would say yes, if we weren't using it for medical. But I have to tell you, most of the time we would be using it for medical. Uh, I have three vehicles now and they're out every day.
Understood.
I mean, I, I think what it really speaks to is that, you know, what we're trying to do is reconfigure our fleet to meet our actual demand. And one of the areas of demand we have is medical transport, where we're taking a single person. That's not handicapped to the point where they can't ride in a normal vehicle in a much bigger vehicle that needs to go. Um, no question, if there's somebody that's in a, in a wheelchair. We're obviously not taking them in the boat, we're taking them in one of our other three vehicles that's designed for us. Um, if we're going to taking people to the Good Speed Opera, we're not taking them in this, we're taking them into a large. In our large van so we can do it more, or a bus, so we can do it economically and move a whole bunch of people. You know, and for shopping trips, where we've got four or five seniors, we're probably not taking this one, we're taking one of the bigger vehicles. But for the day-to-day medical, which is the bulk of the trips we make with senior transportation. This seems like pretty close to a perfect vehicle. Um, and it's the lowest cost of the electric vehicles we could really consider. I mean, I think there are better vehicles than this. But in terms of the cost basis for owning the vehicle, this is probably the lowest cost vehicle. We can get in and meet that need, that's my take on it.
Okay, cuz I, I've been looking at them myself and, uh, you know, I've just been, especially the bolt itself, if you get into a twenty to thirty degree day. I mean, your, your range is gonna be cut be fifty, sixty percent of what it, what the EPA rated range is gonna be. So you just gotta have the understanding that on a cold winter day, you're probably gonna be getting half to sixty percent of what the EPA ranges of this vehicle. So I just wanted to make sure, but.
Where are that?
Yep. So it's just, it's just, it's just a concern, if we start running this vehicle a lot, we may have some range anxiety on a cold day.
Uh, Eric, it would be great if you could sit there and see if there's grants for electric vehicles for community, that would be great. Because then you compare, you compare with the grant you got for the electric charging station and it's free.
There.
So I did look, there is a possibility that the next round of funding. Uh, that we got the other uh, vans and the handicap accessible buses. Will allow us to purchase this, but I haven't seen anything definite one way or the other. And even if we did, you know, we're looking at more than a year before we have one. Uh, if we wanna get one this year, we're gonna end up buying it. Um, unfortunately, the town can't take advantage of the two things that would uh, lower the cost of this vehicle. Um, we are locked out of the state rebate. Um, because we're, as a municipality, we're not eligible. Um, and we're locked out of the, you know, we're a town, we don't pay taxes. So we can't get our money back from the federal government, cuz that would reduce the cost of this vehicle another ten grand. Which would make it like a nineteen thousand dollar vehicle out the door, which would be kind of crazy in and of itself. So there is a possibility, but if we got it, got one under that grant, we're at least a year out. And there's no guarantee because I think more years, we don't get the grant than we do, that's for sure.
Um, Eric, can I just say too that uh, if we do not purchase uh, the vehicle this year. We're kind of defeating the purpose, uh, if we, we'll still have to use the, the bus, the two buses for medicals. So we're kind of defeating the purpose if it's not purchased this year. Um, we can try for a grant next year, but again, who's to say that it's gonna come in in twenty twenty-three? It won't come until twenty twenty-four. The one that we ordered and, and uh, and we were able to get free from the state. Uh, hasn't even, uh, they're just in the bill stage now, as I told all the Board of Selectmen. And uh, it will not be ready until uh, hopefully the spring. But what is the guarantee, they still have no answer.
So we have funding available for the purchase of this vehicle?
So we have options that could be used if you chose to do that. Um, the first thing would be to budget it for next year, um, and buy the thing in July. Because the reality is, even if we wanna buy it right now, buying it under Sourcewell, the Sourcewell of the state contract, we're probably not getting it till then anyway.
Yeah.
Um, you know, or the second option would be potentially because you have money. Uh, as we sign a contract for the community center, that's under a million dollars. You now have a multi-use building fund, which was originally. Had money set aside for a community center with excess funds. So you could theoretically redirect some of the money from that to purchase a fleet vehicle if you so chose. Those are your options as I know.
So the issue, the issue is to sit there and. I, I have, I have to do a little research on my end, I wanna understand the tax credit and, and. You know, I, I, I realize the town has no taxes, but a resident could have. Uh, a use for the tax credit and therefore save the town ten thousand dollars. There's just the question of transference. Sorry, that's how my brain thinks, I apologize.
If you can figure out how to do it, um, I'd be happy to uh, to reduce the cost of further ten thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Um.
Our, our Kathy, Kathy, or when does this decision need to be made on this vehicle? Is there?
When, I, I don't think there's any, I, I don't know, I just feel like if we can do it, we should do it. If we can't do it, then we don't need to talk about it any further. But uh, this is something I've asked the Board of Selectmen every month on my monthly report. And uh, at least for the last seven or eight months, and I have had no rebuttal from the Board of Selectmen. I'm not criticizing, cuz I know how guys, you guys are really, really busy. But uh, I am saying it's time that we deal with the situation and we get a yay or nay, and please don't keep tabling it.
Yeah.
Don't you realize though, Kathy, that you put a pretty picture of a car on a beach in our packet?
Yeah.
Now we understand what you're asking for.
Right.
You know, before, it's just words, blah, 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 words.
I'll say blah, blah, I thought.
Now it's a picture, now I, I feel, I feel, wow, that would look good next to our brand-new Charger. That would look good next to our brand-new Charger, is what I'm.
So would the board of selectmen be in favor of buying the Chevy Bolt?
I, I, I would, I would definitely consider if we, if we find, I mean, if we budget for it, yes. If for the, the following year, when, and we found a way to reduce the cost by ten thousand dollars, I think that would be great.
If we, if we can't find a way to reduce the cost, are you, are you still thinking yes? Or you're thinking that's an added, added bonus?
Oh, I would love, I would love to do it. I, I think it's an added bonus. I think it's a way to reduce the cost for the, for the community, but like all of these programs, you know, I would like to sit there and see if it was, could be grant-funded. And, and if it can't be grant-funded, is it, is it twenty-eight thousand dollars? A good use of our money? And Kathy seems to think yes, and she's sitting there saying she can get a bus off the road that costs us money for maintenance and gas and everything else. So I think it's positive. I would do it. I mean, you gotta remember, like, we gotta put it into the budget. So, you know, again, it's not gonna be another good season for, for budgets and.
Or, or we can use the funds that Eric was talking about.
Well, my, I mean, my hope, Scott, is on all that, is that we do it correctly, and then some of those funds are used to put to utilize to, to build out the community center, the inside of the community center. All of the, the pieces of equipment that, that we're gonna need in there from, you know, a television to the workout room that Kathy wants, to a lot of the other things that should be going into that building. You know, my hope is that we have available resources to do those types of, of buildings, so.
Just so this doesn't stagnate, ca- can we then agree that we'll put it in the budget for the new year?
I have no problem saying that, yeah. Will it stay in the budget? Okay. Yeah, I'll put it in the budget. I'll put anything in the budget. We'll get there. Mike Pelosi's in the back laughing.
So we can, we'll agree that we're, we're at least gonna put it in the budget for this coming year.
I think it would be great. You wanna vote on it? Go ahead.
Yeah, let's vote on it.
Somebody else make this motion.
Scott, go for it.
I, I, I motion to, uh, oh, how much was the price?
So, ballpark around twenty-nine thousand.
Well, I vote to add thirty thousand dollars to the budget, this upcoming budget, for the purchase of, uh, an electric bolt.
I'll second.
Any, any, uh?
May I suggest that you specify Bolt EUV? Because it's a Bolt and a Bolt EUV. The EUV is slightly larger.
Alright, yeah, okay. So an EUV?
Bolt EUV, yes.
So I make a motion to add to the budget, this up, upcoming budget, thirty thousand dollars for a Chevy Bolt EUV.
I'll second.
Alright, further discussion on this?
Yeah, I'm just gonna let you guys know, I'm gonna abstain from this because, uh, I want some more information. And if we can talk to another town that's using an electric vehicle and get some information on real-world range and what we're doing with it, I would vote yes, but I wanna get some more information first.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Alright. Do we want to?
Well, can, can we, can we say we're gonna put it in the budget, and then if we get more information, we can always take it out? Right? If we?
My concern is if we have a driver waiting on a medical and somebody's, you know, in a parking lot somewhere where it's cold, how much are we gonna be draining the battery with heating the vehicle, waiting for them to get out? Um, that's just the questions that I have. And I, and I just think we should probably talk to another town that's using one and see what the pluses and the minuses are before we commit. I mean, we have another month before we could add this into the budget. We're gonna, so they're talking about budget season, so um, I just think a little bit more information wouldn't hurt at this point, so we can make an educated decision.
Okay, Scott, could you amend your decision to consider? Or is that not enough for you?
Let's just get rid of the motion now. We'll do it, we'll do it next month.
So who's gonna do, okay, but let's, in order to talk about it next month, who's gonna do the research and talk to the other town?
I mean, it should be a call to the dealer, right, Eric? You should probably call and see the municipal purchases and see if anybody's using one.
So I have some contacts for Eric, and I'd be glad to pass those right along to him tomorrow and.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanna make sure we're making a good decision on the, for the town, that's all. And I just wanna make sure that we're making the best decision as an engineer.
Yeah, I know, and, and, and I will tell you that one of my interests in getting an electric vehicle now is I think we, as a town, as we go forward, are going to be stuck with the electrification of the town fleet. I think that's coming whether we want it or not. Um, and so the sooner we start understanding the advantages and disadvantages, you know, um, because we should do that now before we start buying J-elect, uh, trucks. Um, then he wants to run me over with one. You know, that's my take on it.
That's fine, but I like Jeff Murray's concept of reviewing and evaluating and getting other information from people who are using it. I mean, it is a potential thirty thousand dollar use of taxpayer money, so.
Absolutely.
Maybe they'll look at it. I hope that doesn't put you off too far, Kathy, but I like the picture. I really do.
I, I like the, I like the idea that at least you, you listened. So I appreciate the fact you listened. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, ten, uh, D, uh, B, it looks like, uh, the disposition of the twenty, two thousand and two twenty passenger bus.
Okay, so we are with a little luck this spring, in the next three or four months going to have a second fifteen-passenger handicap-accessible bus. Which will leave us, at this point, if we don't get the Bolt, with two fifteen-passenger handicap-accessible buses and the handicap-accessible Dodge Caravan, that's a two thousand and fourteen. I would like to get rid of the twenty-passenger bus. The reason is, it's old. Um, it broke down a bunch of times last year. Um, one of the times, I had to go out and, you know, try to figure out how to help rescue it. Um, as did, I think Jay came out too. Uh, but we ended up having to transfer people to another van, smaller van, and leave some of the people that were supposed to be going behind, cuz we no longer had the pas- passenger capacity to do that. That happened at least a couple times. The reality is, it's just, at this point, not a super reliable vehicle. Um, so I would like to get it off our rolls, just cuz I don't wanna have to maintain it anymore. Couple options. One is just auction it. The second one is to just give it to AES and let them use it for transporting, uh, their student. Um, you know, and, uh, that would be what I would see as viable options. Um, Val is on this call. I did ask her to ask the board of finance whether they would prefer going forward, uh, keeping the same contract that we have now, which basically allows them to use a senior transportation vehicle, but to pay for it and to pay into it enough that it covers the cost of the maintenance, or whether they would prefer to have just the twenty-passenger one transferred to them, and they can drive it with whoever they're driving it and be responsible for that. Uh, but the, ultimately, you as a board are the owner of that vehicle. So that's ultimately a decision by the board of selectmen, what you would consider. Um, I think if we, uh, had a Bolt plus three vehicles, there's no doubt that we could loan them a fifteen-passenger handicap-accessible van. Uh, um, you know, essentially daily to transport their student. Um, if we don't have the Bolt, we just have three vehicles, you know, we're doing enough medicals that occasionally it will be a conflict, but not very often. That would be my take on it. Kathy, you can kinda expound on that a bit.
I actually agree with you, Eric, and I like your reasoning. The only question I have, and I've discussed this with Valerie as well, is that, um, we take the seniors twice, or twice or three, three times maybe a year, maybe four times now. Because we are, we're so restricted with COVID that we couldn't travel. We still have money in our, our budget for the, uh, trips this year. And, uh, we actually need that big bus besides the, uh, smaller bus. If our new bus arrives before March, which I don't think, but hey, it could happen. Um, we are planning to trip on March thirteenth. So if we were to, um, give AES, which I think is a great idea, um, the bus, I think that, uh, we wanna go ahead and, and hopefully that Valerie's still in phase that we could use that bus to take our seniors. Because our senior trips start around ten o'clock, and we would be able still to take the young person to school, and we would still be able to bring the young person home in the afternoon.
So prior to the board of Ed weighing in on it, the first, cuz the first decision is yours as a board, which of those approaches you want to, uh, you know, you wanna pursue?
Well, I thought we already said we were gonna try to pursue the electric vehicle if possible. The question on the disposition is, you don't really need to make that decision today.
Right.
You just wanna let us know that this is your plan, is if you get another vehicle, we're gonna dispose of this twenty-person vehicle. So closing, disposing could be, uh, an offer to the board of education to keep and use it and maintain it, or it could be to auction it off.
And I just saw, but I just saw Valerie's note. Do we have any kinda data that would tell us like what, uh, the annual upkeep or maintenance cost on this bus would be? Just a general rule, because she would, it would probably help her to come to the board with a budget of what the upkeep on this bus is at, at its age.
I, I can give her the, that, of the, the cost that we spent last year, the last few years, if that helps.
Yeah, that would probably help her greatly, because that would probably help them, let them decide whether they can afford to budget for it or not.
Well, I, I mean, the other thing is that it's really a I guess the, the first thing I would say is that um, if we are going with just let me back up and say, if we don't get the Chevy Bolt, I think our best option is to give the school the twenty-passenger van, and that gives us the three vehicles we do have to deal with senior transportation. That gives the, us the most flexibility for senior transportation and makes the most sense. If we get the Chevy Bolt, and we then have four reliable vehicles in the fleet, then I have no problem with continuing ad infinitum to support the elementary schools' need to borrow one of those vehicles for student transportation. Does that make it clear where I'm at with this?
Yes.
It, it does, but I would tell you, Eric, if you were trying to give a vehicle to the board of education, even if it's free, you have to do a better job selling it. And telling us that it's broken down multiple times does not make Valerie comfortable that she's making a, a good deal to accept.
Excuse me, excuse me, Jeff, can I just weigh in on that comment, please? The fact is, the fact is, it's late. The second fact is, uh, the bus is in perfect condition right now, because we have spent a great deal of money, which I will show Valerie, I'm glad to show anyone. And, uh, we have spent so much on the upkeep of it, and it'll be going in next week for the yearly check of the ramp. This is required by the State of Connecticut for all our, our, uh, ramp vehicles, that once a year, they have to be examined. And once that comes back clear, which I know it will, there's, there's nothing wrong with, with that bus right now. It's old. That's what's wrong with it. It's old.
I think that's.
Nothing wrong with being old.
Alright, that, that's good. Let's, uh, let's get that information to Valerie, Kathy, if you can, and we'll sit there and, and hopefully data will come in on the Bolt, and we can get some things done. Alright, let's move on to, uh, ten E, twenty twenty-three holidays. So I, I saw the holiday schedule, Eric. What, what, uh, what do we have from a union perspective? What holidays are required?
Okay, so the answer is, depends on the union. Our unions are split, because when the two contracts were written, uh, one of the contracts, and I sent this to all of you, uh, in a separate email, so you had it ahead of time. Basically, um, the, uh, AFSMI employees, which include Public Works, specify the days by, uh, the name of the holiday. Therefore, they would not be eligible for Juneteenth as it's written. Um, the personnel policy, uh, they, uh, would be as it's written. So we're, we're basically split fifty-fifty in the town. Half the people would have it off, half the people would not have it off, depending on what you choose to do, and pending the new union contract. So I gave you a series of approaches. One, you can do nothing and just let it stand the way it is. Two, you can rewrite the personnel policy to either explicitly give or not give Juneteenth, or take back a different day in exchange for Juneteenth, if you think that is more appropriate. I don't have any dog in the hunt. I'm just telling you that right now, that's the position we're in. Um, as most of you know, the state has made it a state holiday.
So, so are, are you telling me that if I look at the twenty twenty-three holidays observed, I have, uh, in February, I have Lincoln's birthday on one Monday, and Washington's birthday on, on the next Monday, and those are two off days for town employees?
Yep, you got it. So the employees already get, and this includes me, not that I take them all, but currently fourteen days uh, because the, both the contracts and the personnel policy also give the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas off.
Okay.
So the other thing I would tell you is that I also gave you guys a summary of what other towns are doing. Um, and the, the bottom line is, the towns are basically equally split between the ones that are not giving Juneteenth off and the ones that have given Juneteenth off to their employee. So there's no real consensus, uh, you know, within towns as to what the, uh, options are. Um, if you would like me to bring up that document I sent you, I certainly can.
Could we give Juneteenth off and take one of the Lincoln or Washington days away and call it President's Day?
Uh, you could certainly do that to all non-union employees easily by simply changing the personnel policy and then giving Juneteenth off. Um, you could use that as a bargaining position with AFSMI for the upcoming contract talks. You would have to go back with MEIU, um, and ask them uh, for a concession, if that's the approach you wanted to take.
I mean, that would be my approach, because it would split off days off and, and be cognizant of recognizing various holidays. I mean, I mean, Lincoln and Washington, they're basically presidents, so one President's Day would be good. George won't mind either. He doesn't care. Abe is a little bit more upset about it. Um, but that's what I would do. I would sit there and consolidate one of the days in February and give the town employees a day off in June.
I think they, they'd like that having a day off in June would be nice, nicer weather. I would appreciate that. I think it makes sense.
Why don't you go back and see if our unions would agree to that and see if we can maybe get that passed and then we can make everybody happy. Anybody else have a problem with that?
My only concern would be anybody that had kids in school. They usually get those days off from the school. So if you gave them the June holiday off, I don't know if that falls in the school seat, in the school calendar.
I believe school is already out.
Yeah, that may be, that may be an issue if somebody had kids in the school system that they get that day off if their kids are off.
That is true. We have one employee.
Wait, wouldn't that be better for them? To get the June, oh, you mean, because they get Washington and Lincoln's birthday off?
No, they have to play. Yeah, they have to pay for daycare, but let's ask the superintendent, do, do you give both those days off? I don't believe they do.
I think so. I don't, yeah.
Nope, there's one day. Yeah, and a lot of times people will use the next one for PD, Jeff, because they got rid of the February vacation. So they usually just use that for the, those two days, but no, they don't get one weekend and then the next week. And Eric is right, Juneteenth, we're already out of school.
Okay, so if we were going to match the school calendar in February, what day do you give off?
Um, for this next year, exist a February coming up next month.
Let's just talk about the February coming up, yeah.
So February coming up, the twentieth is President's Day. They do not have, they don't have the thirteenth or the seventeenth. They have just the twentieth.
Okay, so what I would recommend is that we match the Andover school calendar. And offer a trade for the day in February for the day in June.
So not to throw a monkey wrench, you're not going to get the agree, the union to agree to that because you're trading them a Friday when they don't work for a Monday when they do work. So nobody's going to take that.
Why are you saying that? The thirteenth is a Monday and the nineteenth is Monday right now. You sent us the calendar.
Oops. All right, I'm looking at the wrong month. Sorry.
I mean, I'm only, I'm only looking, Eric, at the red blocks, you know, I have big red blocks. So, I mean, next year, that won't be the case. In twenty twenty-four, that won't be the case, but because the nineteenth will move. I'm assuming the nineteenth will move and it'll be in the middle of the week, but I mean, I think that's reasonable. I, I think that's reasonable in the future to get February. Let's even forget June, Juneteenth or whatever, how, how, how we say it. How do we say it? Juneteenth. I, I kept wanting to put the nineteenth in there, but Juneteenth, all right. So I think it's still reasonable in the future to consolidate the day in February in all union negotiations in the future to match the school calendar. So not to give two straight Mondays off, just one Monday in February. And then deal with Juneteenth on a separate, separately. But that would be me and that's how I would do it. But I definitely would try to consolidate days off in February because it's just that's a, that is the one day that our town hall is supposed to work the longest day of the week. And all of those red dots are all on Monday except one, two. And actually, let's say July fourth, no one's coming in July third anyway. So you may as well put another red dot on July third, so. But okay.
July third, taking them off as vacation.
Well, that's what he's implying.
That's what I'm implying. Eight, eight hours for, for twelve. That's fine.
That, that's a good point.
Okay, so do you need anything else related to that, Eric?
Uh, no, I know where you're wanting to go with it. So you're wanting to broach with both unions, switching to President's Day from Washington and Lincoln's birthdays separately in exchange for getting Juneteenth off. Okay.
Unless anybody else in the Board of Selectmen has a problem with that. Okay. All right, let's move on to item eleven, approval of the minute meetings for Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
I think Scott said he'd second. He's on mute though, and we'll take it though. I saw his mouth move. So Scott seconded it and all those in favor.
I'll abstain because I was not there at that meeting.
All right, item twelve, the budget appropriation transfers over expenditure requests and capital funds allocations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget season.
So the only thing I really want to talk about there is twelve C, which is capital fund allocation, which I put in your packet, which was ninety-eight. Page ninety, along with a discussion about where we were and my initial thoughts with how much we budget for capital. And if you'd like, I can share my screen and you can look at that, or you can read it yourself. Which would you prefer?
Now you can put it up so everybody can see it.
Okay, so that is going back to the twenty twenty year. What was proposed and what was actually funded for twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three? And then what I'm proposing for this year and what we have in the actual accounts for balances. And so as to a couple of things up here that are important. The first is because we now have a federal local bridge program that funds a hundred percent of the cost of bill. The bridges. Eventually, the town will be able to reutilize the four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars that is in the Bunker Hill Bridge Replacement Fund. But we're not going to be able to do that until they either change policy or we have completed the Bunker Hill and Long Hill Bridges. Because that's the amount of money we need to be able to pay the contractors before we get our refunds back from the state and federal government. There is some chatter at DOT that they're going to, the, the state will assume the responsibility for paying the contractors directly. But the way it's worded right now, and the way the contracts are set up right now, that's not the case and it's still the town's responsibility. Even though we will get a hundred percent of that money back, we still have to maintain enough to be able to pay, you know, a significant fraction of the total construction costs.
You want to keep your own down or is that all you want to discuss with us?
That's is there anything, do you have any questions about that portion of it? The only thing I will tell you is that the fire department is still contemplating going to CIP in the town with a request for a new, what they call squad vehicle. And what a squad vehicle is, is something that has the capability of both an engine, which they have now, as well as the heavy rescue. So it would be getting rid of their oldest heavy rescue vehicle or their only heavy rescue vehicle and their oldest engine. And combining it into one vehicle. So get rid of two to combine to one. I don't have prices on it, but I think that's going to be, you know, eight hundred thousand to a million dollar request.
Okay.
That's pretty much what I have at this point, unless you have other questions for me on this.
Were there anybody else on the capital funds allocation? Okay, were there any appropriation transfers or over expenditure requests?
No. The only ones I gave you at the beginning of the meeting. And they're all in the two thousand dollar under category, so they're my responsibility. I gave them to you for visibility. Nothing needs to happen for the last three months of the budget year on those.
Okay, so we'll move on to item thirteen, the tax collectors report and refund request. The tax collector for the month of November collected a hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Okay. Department reports. Were there any refund requests? I didn't see anything in the budget in the package.
I did not, no.
All right, Department reports, assessors report. The building department report is in here. I saw Jay's report for Jay, how much time do you spend on that report?
You're on mute, Jay.
You're, you're on mute, Jay.
No, I, can you hear me now? It doesn't, it doesn't take me long to do that report. I just, I make my notes during the day and every few days I if I don't finish it each day, I finish it a couple of times a week.
Okay.
It's good. I mean, it's, it's, it's informal, but it's basically that's what we're doing. Because I could spend a lot of time on an Excel spreadsheet trying to make something fancy. Because I make notes anyway.
No, I have no problem how you're doing and I was just interested in understanding.
What would you like to know about it? It's kind of, it, it is big.
Jay, I actually like, I, I mean, no, I like it. That wasn't really what I was after.
Okay, no, I thought
How much administrative time was it taking you to complete this report was really what I was after, like, you know? And, and, and not that I want less information, but I was just wondering if it might be better use of your time not to have to do it all. That's all I was after. If it doesn't take you any time and it's just a normal course of your average day, you take notes and then you're just transposing the notes into a form like this.
Yeah, it takes, it takes me to put this together at the end of the month for you guys. It takes me maybe an hour, hour and a half.
It, it, that's
Because I, I do those, you know, pretty much daily anyway.
Anybody have any questions on any of the departmental reports?
Hey, the only other thing I wanted to say relative to Public Works is I think they did a good job of clearing this last time, you know, I think our storm response overall as a town was very good in both the fire department and Public Works and the cert team and myself worked well to serve the needs of the public. Are we perfect? No, but I think this was a pretty good response overall.
Yeah, and I, I think the more trees we get down, the, the smaller they become when they're problematic. Other problem. Un- unfortunately, yeah, there was power outage and things, but it wasn't as bad as some other towns.
Okay. All right, and Kathy Palazzi, thank you very much for your report. It's greatly appreciated. And she left. Now we have Bob Hamburger on. He's probably wanting to talk about his electrical usage. All right, I think we're good there for departmental reports, correspondence. I didn't see any, so let's go to public speak. So we're going to start with Bob Hamburger because he's up there. I think he might be the only person from the public available. Bob, would you like to join us? Okay, he's there for show. Valerie, would you like to contribute at the end of our?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jay, I don't think you need anything. Dennis, thank you very much for attending our meeting. We're done with public speak, so.
Oh, hang on.
Bob, Bob says he wants to be here.
No, Bob, turn on your
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No, we can't.
Okay. Better press the right buttons here. And you were absolutely right that I just wanted to chime in on the electric vehicle subject as somebody who's had a plug-in hybrid for the last year and a half. First of all, if your intent with getting an electric vehicle is to supplement transportation for medical visits and things like that, I would seriously consider a much larger vehicle than the one that we're talking about, a bolt, a vault, whatever it's called. Because people with limited mobility, people with equipment apparatus, things, wheelchair that has to be folded up. You're very quickly going to fill up any available space in, in a, a small car like that. So I think if you're going to seriously consider the topic for medical transportation, you're going to have to look at something that's like sized SUV or bigger. So that's, that's point number one I wanted to contribute. The second is, if I'm hearing it right, the twenty passenger bus sounds like it's needed three or four times a year. And if that's the case, we shouldn't own any asset that's only used three or four times a year. We should be renting it or leasing it or hiring it. And lastly, to respond to Kathy's contribution about how much we've spent on repairs. This is a thing called the sunken cost fallacy. Just because we've spent a lot of money on it doesn't mean that it's not going to continue to be expensive to operate. In simple language, it's called throwing good money after bad. So I was watching this on my TV. I, I started shouting at the TV and I realized, well, I need to join the meeting and speak my piece. So that's what I have to say.
So what's, what's the efficiency of your EV during the winter, Bob?
So I have a Honda Clarity, which is a model that's not made anymore. It's a little bit bigger than a Civic, a little smaller than an Accord, which means it carries four people relatively comfortably. The battery in it right now has a straight battery range of thirty-seven or thirty-eight miles. This is a hybrid, though. It has a four-cylinder engine and a three hundred fifty mile range with a full gas tank. So when we use it just around town, you know, Michael uses it to get to school every day. And for that, it's straight electric. You know, it's five miles from our house to Ram and back again. And when we're running errands, say going to Manchester, Vernon, or to Willimantic, you know, going shopping on the weekends, we're running pure electric because we're going to be running less than thirty miles round trip in a given day. So, you know, range isn't an issue. A pure electric vehicle is going to have a bigger battery than a plug-in hybrid. And you know, you're going to want to look at electric vehicles with hundreds of miles of range on the battery, not tens of miles like a hybrid. The point of a hybrid is that if I remember the statistics, something like eighty-five percent of car use in this country is less than fifty miles a day. So you can do the vast majority statistically, you know, if you're an average person on just battery. Now, a municipal application is going to be something different. So you're going to have to look at the specifics, vehicle to vehicle, and I think a reasoned approach to getting an electric vehicle or a hybrid would take a look at how we've been using this over the past several years, what the average trips are, how many trips per day, the distances and things like that. So. Question.
Any other questions for Bob?
Can I rebut that one?
No, before, before it's public speed, we'll, we'll let it go. But Bob, I, I really do want to tell you there has to be a lot better programming on your television than the CBC broadcast of the Board of Selectmen needs to man over, but thank you for watching. You're boosting our ratings. We appreciate it.
Well, you know, I am a concerned citizen, so.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, so I think we're good. We're at item seventeen, adjournment.
Most new adjourn. Most new adjourn.
Second. Jeff Murray got in on that. Good job. All right, all those in favor?
I, I, thank you very much.
Good night, all.